Right. All the order, the regular school board meeting that West Valley Board June 19th, 2023. Citizens may comment on items appearing on the agenda when invited to participate during an agenda item by the board chair. Citizens may comment on items related to school district business not appearing on this agenda during the public comment portion of the meeting. Citizens after identifying themselves proceed to make comments as briefly as the subject commits. Basic rule of decorum and effect with all kinds. Jerrys may interrupt or terminate an individual statement in queue when appropriate, including when statements are out of order, too lengthy, which personal privacy rights are abusive or seen irrelevant or otherwise improper. The public should realize that this is a trustee business meeting conducted in a public forum will stand for the clutch meetings.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and ever to be.
Entertaining a motion for approval of the consent agenda. And on those June 5 ones, are we pulling up on those minutes? No. Are they not on there? They're not linked to my. You want me just to email them? Does that work?
I think it would work. It's just we went to both session, right?
Not on that one. This was the when Cindy fully did the budget update. There's June 5. And then we hired Landon Henderson. Yes, that's the other thing we did without meeting. Luckily, it wasn't too long of a meeting, so hopefully that worked. Just I just sent them.
Your on the 16th, there's two agendas attached. The second one has the link to the June 5 meeting.
It does.
First agenda did not. We have two side by side agenda attachments. And the second one had a link. The first one did not.
Okay, good. Maybe that's my happiness. There was a couple of other things that didn't update on the first agenda, so I reset to that. So maybe that's why.
Yeah, I don't know. My showing that I don't have permission for. Well, for the agenda, it just doesn't pop up for the subs list. It says I don't have permission.
You have to volunteer to be served.
Yeah.
Then we get you access to that.
Put your hours in.
Right. Yeah, Jeff, if you go back up to that first email, there is one command in those minutes.
Okay.
I got the minutes anyway, right? They just came through.
On the May 8 minutes, I thought it would be, I did say after Gretchen said she wasn't informed of the meeting. I did say that she was informed via email, which I think just for clarification is appropriate to say. Is that made? I'm sorry. Yeah, made. Yeah.
Okay, so. What are they?
Sorry. So this would be under section 3 consent agenda. The minutes. Okay, she stated she was the April 19th meeting. She was not informed. Okay, the bulls said they need to be informed. And I just, I did note in that meeting that they that they were informed to be emailed, which obviously, you know, they didn't get in time, which is an issue, but it was just for clarification. They were informed to be emailed. If I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda subject to adding that comment on the May 8.
There's something.
Just to clarify, you did go back and update that stuff to what we talked about on the May 8.
Yep, and those are posted on the website. Okay, and they're also documented in that May 8 in those minutes as well, the corrections.
I will second any discussion.
I was in favor of approving the consent agenda with the changes. Say aye.
Aye.
At the post fashion advocacy approval of the bills, May summary and May approval list. So these are very preliminary at this point. With being gone last week and then trying to cram it all in today. And typically in June, there's two sets of bills done anyways, so I have to have them all paid and closed out by June 30th. And at that point, then I will email the completed list. And then on the agenda for tonight as well, there's the appointment allowing me to pay those bills. So when we get to that, when we get to that part, then you know, request that I could email that completed summary claims out. And then you guys approve them at the August meeting instead. Okay, with that. Alright, so entertaining motion to prove the bills as they are with the idea that then that would be completed and approved at the August meeting. Right? Yes. Yep, everything has to be closed out by June 30th, so for the fiscal year.
So with that, so when do you think we'd have kind of? Because we talked about scheduling over the first time, like some budget meetings and maybe once like once you got this year fully closed out, then I think that'd be the form of it to kind of where we come up for next year.
Yeah, these should be, I mean, as long as I get all of, you know, like the bills, I should have these wrapped up next week and then we can schedule maybe like the week after the fourth. Like the first part of July, we can look at special work session. Which would type off. Our usual meeting time, but we skip July. Which is, so are you looking at this more like a work session, like finance type committee or what?
Yeah, I think there is like, well, read through those policies. There is like a technical budget meeting.
Yes.
Falls under budget meeting or budget. I was kind of hoping budget workshop, but we can figure out the details of what it needs to be.
I think a budget workshop, because we have the official budget meeting in August, but I think we talked about maybe having more than one budget workshop before we get to budget in August. So this is the first one.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. So so both kind of tentatively look at that following week of like first week of July, whatever. Day that is.
Pick a day that's not Sunday.
We'll try the July attempt. This is the second Monday in July, so we can tentatively plan that.
Okay, yeah, but if, yeah, we can, that works very well.
But we do need to. Yeah.
We can talk. And then you'll have all the final stuff by then.
Yes, yeah, all the bills will be closed out and then we'll, that's when I start compiling like all the balancing for the summer and reporting and stuff like that. But yeah, this part will be closed out. So we need motion late to this event.
Is the maybe I just didn't catch it, but it's probably the budget. But the audit. Is that a typical charge for the audit? It is.
No, it's, um. Let me look at last year's actually, because I was just looking at this. It is, it is more. Um. I want to say it's roughly 20 each year. So this one is more. And that's something that we, that of what we tell you, we don't have any choice about that, right? The audit and it's conducted by independent firm and that's what we need. Yeah.
I mean, the only option you have is to shop a different firm, but that's not, that's the best option either. So.
Sometimes it's good to have somebody that's familiar with school budgets, because they're like nothing else.
Yeah. But there are some other firms that do good work, you know, like JCCS.
Well, we could look into that.
Yeah.
So like last year. Yeah, last year's probably a little closer to 20, like 19, 20ish. So this one is more.
Was it just related to kind of
it is.
Cleaning up some of the asset transactions and stuff?
Yes, yes. And we'll get all that cleaned up here in the next week or, you know, and then learn and move forward.
And then potentially going forward, maybe it'd be lean back towards the 20 years.
Yeah, yeah, and we won't have maybe another year or so of that federal audit with the ESSR money. But since we haven't, we don't have hardly any, we have a few thousand here and there, but we won't have that federal audit anymore. So that'll be a lot cheaper. We'll just have the standard audit. So that federal audit and the standard audit together can get 30,000. So we pay for the federal audit too. And yeah, and then that's the auditor's time and looking into the corrections and doing the corrections. And then they make all the entries for me and I put them in the black fountain and I fixed it.
So the ESSR, they make you pay for not, but you can't use the funds that they give you for the audit.
You can't. You can use some, which that's something that I I really need to look into because by the end of June, because then that might be a transfer we could do to. Yeah, we should use up all that ESSR money. Yeah, be done with it and then not gonna stick around forever. They'll let you pay the ESSR money, we'll let you pay for the audit. Yes. Yep, and that, yeah, I just need to look at the parameters as like if it's a percentage of it, but it's at least looking worth looking into and maybe even if it saves us a few thousand, that would be nice.
Yeah.
And seriously, we won't have a federal audit next year.
It would be probably a lot more minimal because we don't like. Yeah, we haven't had the ESSR money for most of this year. There was a beginning, there was some lot that we like we purchased the curriculum with that type of stuff, but yeah, it should be hopefully a lot easier next year. I'm not making promises, but that's what I'm hoping for.
That would take us back down to more of that $20,000 range. Okay.
Yeah, hopefully.
So then when we get to the kitchen supply, that was a lot of the
Yep.
funds that we were
Are you look, are on here?
Like the tables.
So that she actually wrote a grant for those tables. And so that's covered. And then she also had an excess of funds for last fiscal year. And so we had to spend that. And so she's been, she did a lot of yeah, new things for the kitchen to cover that. Yeah, she actually wrote a couple of grants over the course of the year, like one was for our milk cooler, one's for the tables. So. Yeah. So these, this, the kitchen supplies and tables that are on here, where it's listed, then what about seven, eight thousand? Yep, dollars. That was actually paid for. Out of, out of a grant. By grant. So this really isn't.
So I'm assuming that MTSP just hasn't, so whether the bill through there.
That is.
For May, I see April, but.
The other thing I don't know if you like on here, the Evergreen School District, that one comes out of our tuition fund, so that's levied permissively levied, so that doesn't come out of reach of help on the either. And the Special Education Co-op. So those are different funds on those two. I'll make a motion to approve the May bills.
A second.
Is there any discussion? Alright. All in favor of approving the May bills, say aye.
Aye.
At the post fashion advocacy correspondence, gifts and public participation. I have none here. Logan Hill is here and he'll be here shortly. We have a couple more things to go through. You're on the agenda, but they'll be. Thank you for coming. Well, thank you. Alright, do we have the West Valley parent teachers' report? Anybody? No, okay.
They're looking for somebody to take that over and run it if anybody wants to. The PTO? The PTO.
Okay. Don't everybody jump up now. That's good to know. We're just gonna have to try to beat bushes for that one. West Valley Teachers Organization, do we have a, do we have a presentation? Aside from the later presentation on that, the contract. Okay, alright. Yeah, we have technology.
Yeah, so we just, tech department's been very busy holding up this year and getting everything prepped for the school year next year, inventorying all staff's devices. We have a couple of steps this summer just to check off some things to strengthen our cybersecurity just a little bit. But they're just back in things. There's no purchases. Our purchases will be next school year budget for that firewall that I talked about in April. But
The security things for the doors and that you were working on, I think.
Yeah, meeting. Yeah, so those are all in, those are all good. The schedule's set for the next school year already, so I haven't received back anything from our, from Systems Northwest for like switching over the alarms yet. They did a walkthrough and we're gathering information, but I haven't gotten the quote back yet.
Yes, that's in the budget for next year. We've got some security stuff to work on. All of them, please. The current one, right?
Yes.
Okay, so it is more cost effective.
It is.
To switch.
Yeah, it's cheaper, a lot cheaper per month and well, per year, but comes down to cheaper per month. And then it's they are cheaper for like onsite work as well. But I haven't gotten like the quote back for how much you would need to switch everything over.
That'd be the one time fee.
Yes, yeah, that would be because your security, most majority of like the security boxes and everything are very proprietary. So they're with one, like one company. And so yes.
But but in the long run, switching them over is.
Yeah, their monitoring system is cheaper like quite a bit, hundreds of dollars per, per year.
Okay, well.
And they're a really good firm and they're low ball as well.
Yeah, I've been very impressed with their customer service.
What's the name of them?
Systems Northwest.
Systems.
Is the current.
They do a lot of work for the hospital.
Yeah.
That's the front system, not been so great.
No, so our, that's why we had to switch over our access control is we were having issues with a door that was just randomly going open and trying to receive help from our current person, people that put it in was very difficult. And then, yeah, the system, it's works, but there's there's just a lot of little faults in the system that make it hard to get the code disarmed because you have to clear them all. And it's nothing that affects the alarm still alarmed. It's just little things and, and the in, I mean, I've only been here this year, but the customer service from the current one versus Systems Northwest bottomed beyond anyways. Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, principals report.
Give a quick update on our enrollment. So kindergarten has 42 regist- registration so far. That's the most we've ever had at this time of year. It could be attributed to the online system that we now have. Hopefully, parents are able to do that a lot easier. Because in the past, the office has been closed and then nobody's been here to, you know, really think about it. So what was on the parents' minds that in August, we get this wave of enrollments and have to change grade levels for teachers. It's been a mess. One interesting thing that we're seeing in the elementary is that we've got a couple of classes with really high numbers. Third and fourth grade next year will be at 92, 94. And then a couple of classes with pretty low numbers, second grade, for example, will be at 74. First grade is 80. And then, of course, kindergarten is always impossible to predict. So it's going to be interesting to see how we staff that, so going through, it's, it's kind of a, just a maybe a temporary bump, or maybe that's the trend that we're going to start to see in our kindergarten classes. Birth rates are down since I think the peak was about 2015 to 2017. And that that's just in Montana. I don't know exactly about the valley specifically. But if it would affect us, it would affect everything. So I don't know if the future of that looks like necessarily. So we're sitting right now at 382. Last year, we ended at 424, I think, something like that. So they are out there. I'm sure we're that I'm sure we're going to get them. They will show up. But anyway, so even if that's interesting too, because even if we increase that two and a half percent, which is half of what we've increased for the last 10 years, we will actually see a decrease in enrollment. So it's kind of a funky little thing there, not by a heck of a lot, but it's still a decrease. Right now, yeah, currently we've got a couple pair of applications in, just waiting there right now. Kind of reached out and talked to several, you know, several people who are interested as well. So it's kind of funny because we've been begging, begging, begging and never getting it. And then all of a sudden that's an interest, which is a good thing. Our custodian in the elementary in the building is experiencing some health concerns. And so he has not been in since even before school got out. And so it's really taxing the custodial staff who are here, which is Sophia and her daughter, Arlene. So we've got about six people moving about. And so I mentioned that because it's, it's really going to be hard when Arlene leaves, because that leaves all this here. To do, you know, an entire building of stuff. Tony is helping out as well. The Tony Smith, but he's got a lot of projects. Bill is installing drinking fountains in the elementary lunchroom and a sink for hand washing, which will be very, very helpful for next year. Of course, he's running into some speed bumps here and there. There's no project. He's like, it was easy as it was. So he's had to dive in and spend a lot more time.
Hey, thank you. Middle school, I guess I was looking at numbers too. I have a little bit different numbers than Richard had, but elementary down 98 and middle school up 29 right now. So if they're through eight, up 29 at the moment. And but we don't have those kindergartners in there yet. So this I don't anticipate that one that is going to be down as far as it was at the moment. But again, we did lose 60 something kids across the school year. And right now I don't show them coming back. I see the middle school up, but I don't see the enrollment numbers as high as what we saw lose across the year. The existing at the end of the year, we have about 20 that left at the end of the year and about 20 new enrolled right now. And those are not the kindergartners. So right now it's about even as far as the end of the year. We felt that big drop across the year. But at the end of the year, we've had about the same leaning as coming in right now. So across all the grade levels. And one position remains in the middle school. As you know, I sent an email out, Landon Henderson declined the position for social studies. And he got a job in Whitefish. Started a different place on a scale and substantial and greater amount of money. They like working here, but I understand the full two when you're talking that that kind of situation. So we still have one position remaining to be filled. And course registration for sixth aid is hanging right, right now. I haven't registered the kids into their courses because your core teachers teach the electives. I'm not quite sure how that fits right now. And we had previously interviewed for the math and I put forward someone tonight for that position, possibly for math, just kind of restructured again. I can talk about that later if you want. Several of us attended a conference recently. And that's CSPD Summer Conference, and it's a state system of personnel development. We talked a little bit about training at our last meeting. And one of the ways that we get free training and it's set up through the state is through that system. And several, Alicia was there, Terry went, I think I saw a couple of teachers on different different pieces of a program that they had gone to. But several of us went to the school law updates of the day long classes, school law, and then a day in MTSS procedures and implementation. So that was really interesting. You get some updates on school law. And there was some talk about some of the policies that you'll be looking at tonight and the changes those are causing in schools. And another project that I'm just working on is that the OPI math standards are up for review. So we had a lot of talk about that earlier in the year. And there's, it's called the Standards Revision Task Force. And I'm on the And I'm on the six, eight task force for that. But in our first day of talk, um, a lot came up about just all the way through the, the language in it. Some of the things that we had talked about earlier in board meeting about simplifying the math language. Um, simplifying the, um, amount of contact content, maybe going deeper with the content, but not as broad. And then some of the big ideas that came up aside from language was just, um, replace, it doesn't matter too much to elementary, but as far as eighth grade goes, then after pre-algebra, you would take geometry before you took algebra one and then algebra two. So we feel like kids are getting lost taking algebra one, then going to geometry and then going to algebra two. And then we're losing kids in that. So just some big changes that could be coming in the next few years, uh, out of the revision of the standard. So it goes um, we're in review and write, or writing development and then it'll go to review and then it goes to accreditation and then the like later. So, but looking forward to some changes, um, to those standards and, and making them readable even to families, students, teachers. That's an interesting thing that's going on. And not a lot else in middle school right now. Thank you. Superintendent's report. Okay, so we'll go on to the action items. Um, resignation of Heather Roberts Elementary Fair. Did anybody care to comment on that?
Reasons that she is leaving is because of compensation. It's pretty impossible, but she was offered six dollars more an hour in a bay as a teller. And she can work in the summers as well. So she normally, um, looks for a job in the summer and that it's, it's a tech job and then she comes back. This year, when she was looking for it, they offered it to her if she would start. So, so she, she took it.
So she got a year-round job.
Yeah.
Entertained motion to accept your resignation. Can we just do them all together?
This is kind of in a similar situation. She's doing cleaning, cleaning houses. And she can make more in two to three hours, you know, doing that than she could all day here. So she's, uh, Whitefish, you can buy, you may even have some. It's some of the data about it. I don't go distantly. Why is it was difficult to understand, but she's cleaning some houses.
And Heidi, the food service supervisor. That's, anybody?
No comment.
No comment or not, okay. We have our letter of resignation. And we should here if we said that, then we better put that on our website as an opening outright. That we will be more, um, a food service supervisor.
We can open that as soon as, as soon as we.
Yep. We should probably put that out there as a as another opening, right? Okay. Entertained a motion then to accept all these resignations.
Make a motion to accept the resignation of Heather Roberts, Paula Nielsen and Heidi Durbin.
Any more discussion? Hey, um, all those in favor of accepting resignations of Heather Roberts, Paula Nielsen and Heidi Durbin? In favor? Hi, anyone opposed? Now, Logan Health Mobile School Based Hospital Rest- Resting.
Rebecca Milligan, one of our providers. It's hard to believe it's been two years since we were out here pitching this idea the first time. Um, I've got some facts and stuff if anybody wants them and some handouts, but, um, so we have, what we have is two mobile unit, mobile clinics, primary care clinics for lack, a better way to look at it. Uh, they were donated to us, um, by two different families in the valley. Uh, we're looking to deploy one in the West Valley area. So Kyla, Smith Valley, West Valley and Marion. We had letters of commitment from all the schools originally, but that was a couple of years ago now. Um, they're finally coming to fruition. So a little bit about school-based health. It's been around in the States, in the United States since like the mid-sixties. Um, and it's really started to grow throughout every, every city in Montana now has multiple different, um, not mobile, but them, they have clinics in different schools. Billings has a clinic that they actually built right in their new school in the parking lot. Uh, we are in four different spaces right now. Uh, Big Fork, Summers, Lakeside and Cuyes Prairie. And the past twelve months, we've seen eleven hundred kiddos and staff. About forty percent of those were acute care, so that would be your strep tests, stitches, those type of things that are in the moment. Twenty-five percent, um, more wellness visits or yearly exams, um, and then sports physicals are in there. Uh, twenty percent are your chronic care management and the remainder would be mental health visits. It's been a while since I've, since I've done this pitch. I've been to every school in, from Lake County all the way up. Uh, so we're gonna deploy the other unit in Lake County. Um, we're working with the Montana Healthcare Foundation to cover our, our staffing. We do not make any money at this. We do charge, just like a regular clinic visit. Um, but a lot of those visits, if you have strep and you're going in, it's gonna be an urgent care visit. And those are always higher and impact, yeah. I guess with the Northwest Health Consortium, uh, who carries your insurance? No? Okay. So it's just one of those things that helps with your premium overall is that we're not, you don't see a lot of urgent care visits. Yeah, it's, it's we have Big Fork is kind of our flagship, if you will, right now. Um, we have gotten exterior entrance. We see we have our, our schedules full there always. And we treat it a lot like, um, your small town doctor, if you will. We get to know the kiddos. We're out on the playground. We're visiting with staff, we're making the rounds, we're interacting in that capacity. But we're not there to replace primary care. We work hand in hand with someone's primary care. We very rarely, um, does any, anyone establish care with us. It is more just an adjunct. We like to walk hand in hand with those primary care providers. Because they know the kiddos best. They know the family. They know all the breadth of knowledge about everything that goes on in those families. So we just are there to help in those times when we're needed.
Yeah, I, I can speak, I'm, so I'm actually Nora and Ian Milligan's mom, um, but they come here. So of course, West Valley, I'm always like, go where you're. But so Big Fork, for example, I get a lot of teachers coming in because oh my gosh, my throat's been hurting for three days and I'm tired of it hurting. Can we do a strep test? But absolutely. So we do a strep test real quick. Yes, they're positive or no, they're not. And it's like, okay, well, here's some suggestions on how to get better or here's your antibiotic. So most of the time they're only out of the classroom for twenty minutes max, and then they're right back in the classroom if they can come back. If not, it's like, okay, maybe go find, you know, we're pretty set, so make sure you get taken care of and take care of yourself. So I see a lot of that. And then the kiddos. Um, Jen Knopfik is the school nurse out of Big Fork and she is wonderful. I adore her, but she sends a lot of those kids home. And but before they go home, they stop into my clinic and like, oh yeah, definitely an ear infection. Let's start that antibiotic right now. Or man, I'm sorry, this, you know, it's just starting to become like flu-like-ish symptoms. Let's keep an eye, stay home. Um, come back in two days if you need me. Um, mental health, it's a big piece of what I do. A lot of that is helping those kiddos through those tough times, giving them the resources to get, giving the parent the resources to get that kiddo the help they need. And then of course, like those wellness visits don't like to take away from the primary care provider at all. But then there's also new kiddos that come into the school and they're like, we don't even know where to start. I'm like, well, I can start and then we can establish you with somebody else if you don't like me. I don't take offense. I'm just happy you came to see me. So, um, they, all those type of care things that you just needed were those last minute Band-Aids. Done a lot of Band-Aids. Um, they come in and they're like, hey, I got it. It's like, okay, come on, let's get you a Band-Aid and send you back out to the playground. Um, at Summers, I actually helped the health teacher with archery. One day, that was a lot of fun. Um, my MA, my MA and I stood there and we're just like the extra safety, so another set of eyes.
Like sutures in hand, ready?
Yeah, I brought the medic bag. A little paranoid, so we brought everything. Um, down in, uh, Cuyes Prairie, the gym teacher and I, you know, we play basketball. I'm a horrible basketball person. I don't jump. So just kind of standing there as like a guard for these, you know, eighth graders that are taller than I am and just trying to pretend I'm tall. Um, that type of stuff and then getting to know the staff moving around. But just those are, um, not so much like urgent care. You are seen as an urgent care, like twenty minutes or less is our goal. But you're not treated as an urgent care where it's like, okay, you're in, you're out, get out the door. It's like, no, tell me, what, what's your day like? How are you doing? That type of stuff. We have a great team. Um, myself is the nurse practitioner. We have Hannah, who's a PA. We have Jody, who's a PA, and then we have Brittany, who's the director, um, who's a nurse practitioner as well. So we all work really closely together. I'm out of town for something, you know, Brittany's willing to cover. We, we are great. We are a great provider team and we have great MAs that work with us. Like, we're just lucky to have such a cool team with us. Of course, my passion is to take care of people. It'd be great to take care of kiddos here at West Valley too, because I would be the one coming out here. Something I do wanna touch on is that confidential confidentiality and HIPAA and PFRPA and all those are strong in my heart. So if somebody comes to see me, that stays with me. Like Vegas, what happens with me stays with me. So I know that can be kind of a concern with school and a clinic there, but I only will speak with the school or the school will speak with me once we get that consent. Speaking of consent, I will never see a child without their parent there. Ever, ever, ever. Um, I don't care if I've known that kiddo for years on end and I know exactly what's going on. I will still not see that child without a parent there. Um, that's kind of the whole basis of the school-based clinic too, is that we are a clinic. We are per doctor's office. We will treat it as such. So we wanna make sure that parents feel comfortable with us. We will make sure that we are comfortable with the situation too. We won't ever overstep that medical boundary type of thing. Granted, if you wanna play basketball, I'll try. So, um.
Every, um, every clinic is billed as, it's Summers is school-based clinic. It's Big Fork's school-based clinic. This would be West Valley's school-based clinic. You folks would set the parameters for what, what we do and don't do within a, within a, you know, within some guardrails. So it is, that's how we like to envision it, is that you take some ownership of it with us. And we have a lot of conversations surrounding, you know, the hours and what we do and who we see. Some schools don't allow anybody else to be seen outside of students and staff. Big Fork is okay with family members, um, is okay with community members after school is out, those type of things. So it would be and, and Marion is, the whole community could come. They, they wanna treat it like a community-based clinic. So it's, it's totally up to you and what you think about it and how you wanna shape it and help it grow.
How many hours? I just as an idea, you know, what are you looking to spend one day a week out here or one day a month or?
I think, I think we would, and so first off, we won't show the volumes to ever be profitable, um, in our smaller schools. The CEO is committed to keeping this program alive as one of our community service benefits from the hospital.
Okay.
So I would think that we would probably start out at one day a week here, possibly two. And then be out in Marion a couple of days a week and then at Smith Valley and Kyla and split that up as well.
I just have, you know, our nurses now are handling our our injuries that happen on the playground. They're the bandage people and, and the kids that are getting sick to their stomachs and all that. Our nurses are having, parents are not here, but they're on a.
We don't have nurses.
Well, no, I'm sorry. They're not nurses. They are. They're, they're acting as nurses there, but they are office staff, okay? And they do this on, at the spur of the moment when the injury occurs. Parents are not there. They hand out Band-Aids when they're needed. I'm just wondering if we had to go through a process where we had to get parents there before they could come out to get the bandage or whatever they need. It'd be a different, it'd be a different scenario, I think.
So emergency situations, I, I'm not by myself. I would, if the front office staff called and said, hey, a kiddo bumped to their head and they've lost consciousness, can you come? I would definitely gladly go out to the child wherever they may be, along with my MA. And my MA would be calling the parents at the same time as I'm walking out. We, we would still be calling, we would still want those same procedures of like, parents need to be involved.
Okay.
And so if the, I walk out there and mom's like, I do not want her touching my daughter or son at all, then as a good Samaritan, I would struggle with that, but at the same time, I respect mom and dad's wishes and, and.
Go back to the.
Yeah, and, and help, just help as best I can from a distance. Because I have to respect mom and dad's wishes. I would be upset if someone did something to Nora and Ian without my permission. So in emergency situations, thankfully, we haven't had big emergency situations. I've, I've been a part of a a post-fight in Big Fork where we called the parents. One kiddo had to be in on ambulance and as we're calling the parents, it's like, are you okay with us seeing your kiddo? And they said yes. And then also in that situation, I'm not billing that child. I'm literally just trying to get that kiddo taken care of and I'm not, I'm not charging for them to just get basic emergency services.
So you don't, you, you don't really treat any kid that, that doesn't pay.
That one, I, I am not an insurance or a billing person.
We don't turn anybody away. And, and anybody that needs help in finding a way to pay, uh, we work with our assist program to bring them in and, and figure out a way to get that kiddo coverage if they don't have coverage, if the family qualifies. So there's, there, nobody will ever be turned away because they can't pay. And, and when a family asks for help or is looking for help, we have, we have the ability through a different part of our program or a different part of Logan Health to help find them. Um, whether it's getting signed up for Healthy Montana Kids or if they qualify for Marketplace or any of the other things. There are people out there that, that we have that help navigate that with families. And it happens on a fairly regular basis, especially with the new, the influx of new folks in the valley.
So you guys operate within this, within the school? Are you guys bringing a mobile clinic in actual?
It, I'll, I'll share, um, some an email with you guys after the fact, but it's a mobile unit. It's, uh, Nomad is building it. Um, it is, it's got two two bump outs. It's about forty-five feet long. It's got an entrance with a little small office and then a full exam room in the back with the table. It's, looks just like a, a small clinic. And, yeah, so.
Big Fork though has provided a space for us, um, that has that exterior entrance. Summers has places in a classroom in their annex building. Uh, Cuyes Prairie has stuck us in a, like, right next to the cafeteria. So it's a small space, but it's efficient. It works. The kids walk by and they all say hi. Um, so each school, but the mobile clinic, of course, would be driven up and then driven away at the end of the day.
All those spaces, we've paid fair market value, so we lease all those spaces. And so that's, we the same here. We've, we've got a fair market value established. I think it's for a day parking, it's twenty-five dollars in the valley. And that would, would's what we pay you guys every, every time we came.
Yeah, we got parking issues, so.
That's for you guys to negotiate with, with the powers that be. I don't have that kind of a.
And gosh, I'm a parking park too.
And all billing and coding would go through your contracted billing and coding.
Yes, sir.
That's well, and is there any additional fees associated with the mobile unit for the for the gentleman that are seen here? Nope. And no additional fees for signatures or provider signatures that are required here? Yeah, okay.
No, no, I'm glad you asked. No, we just wanna provide care for those kiddos that need us.
At the other schools, do you do like consent possibly ahead of time? So maybe you could kind of get rid of that extra step of having to call? The parents, or do you still do that no matter what in each situation?
So in I've established with one, I'll give an example. I've established well with one particular family that I have a very sick kiddo that I see frequently. Um, I, every time we do still call the parent, but the parent does not have to come and we call and say, hey, kiddo's here. We're gonna see her, him or her for this amount of time. And if there's anything major, we'll call you right after. But that's also been a. But that's also been a, almost a year and a half of establishing that relationship.
Okay.
Everybody knew that comes into me. So that would be every West Valley person would be.
Would get the phone call.
Would get the phone call. I would need the consent. Then of course, like, if you go to Sunnyview, you know, you sign a consent once and then it's good for a year. Eventually we would get there too, but for right now, we are signing consent every single time.
Okay.
There is the possibility in Montana State law to have a two verbal consent. Over the phone as well, as long as a provider and then a witness.
Yes.
At the same time, witness the consent of the child being seen.
By phone.
Yes.
So that would be my M A calling and I would be on the other side listening as well. And yes. However, with young kiddos, especially since this is a kindergarten through middle school. Um, it is preferred that the parent is there or I, I understand working parent hands down understand that. I've been on the phone with mom while I'm seeing the kiddo, um, and dad's on the way to pick up said kiddo. And I'm just checking out ears. Very situational. I will be honest, it's very situational. Um, but always will get consent and always will have a parent involved with the care. Always. So I, like I said, I would be super upset. Someone did something without me finding that, like with my children, so.
And that mobile unit wouldn't require the use of electricity, water or anything on site here?
Yeah, completely. It is completely self-sufficient. It, um, if, if you can plug in, it's a great option, but if not, it's self-sufficient. It's got a great generator and runs super quiet.
And aside from parking space and a cost association with the school and a contract that would be.
Zero cost to the school. Just to community benefit.
What sounds, I mean, in my opinion, it sounds pretty good. Seems like you guys have a lot of the concerns ironed out from working at the other schools with consent and everything and. I mean, I can see the convenience from having kids here and just being able to skip the trip into Sunnyview and. You know, the appointment and, you know, just being able to take them right home. I guess my only question is what's the next kind of step in the process?
Um, I have a. I have a letter of, of intent basically that I would send out to you guys and it's, it's more for, um. Some grant funding. That one would be just saying, we agree to work with the school-based clinic. And then I've also got a contract that you guys can review that's. Is the basic straightforward contract, paying for a space to lease throughout the year. You know, the decision of how many hours and when we're here is, is a conversation that we have together and come to an agreed upon time. Um, it's pretty simple and straightforward.
I mean, with our parking thing situation, it had to be probably after school starts and before. I don't know.
Is that like, yeah, get like way over there or something?
Every, every school's got it. Every school's got parking.
Put over there. That might not be the worst, least. Yeah, you sure don't want them out in the middle of the.
Hours, the example for hours, Big Fork during the school year where you, you start seeing patients at nine and the last patient's at four thirty. However, we can always adjust those hours. Um, and then Summers is like, those are our hours. It's like we start seeing patients at nine and end at four thirty. And then, but we're also there. Three days a week right now. Um, Summers and Caillou's Prairie were there, or Caillou's Prairie were there Tuesday, two days a week and then Summers one day. Just because their volumes are slowly starting to build, but they are starting to need us there a little bit longer. So. But that, that's just example of ours.
So we can start it like at nine and be, and be done by three, but.
I think it'd be interesting to talk to some of the other schools that are doing this and see. If that's worked well for them, what tips they have, rather than reinvent the wheel.
And be happy to get you all the contact information. I work pretty closely with all the superintendents. And then aside from that, there's a few other programs that we affiliate with the, the youth development program, which works with a lot of athletes. Works with Save the Brain for the concussion protocols. Um, but I think he went and got trained on it as well.
Yeah.
And then, um, there's at Montana Pediatrics is an after-hours care. Uh, it's really utilized in a lot of the more rural areas. It was started on some of the Highline reservations and it's. It's for those after the weekend calls where you're not sure if you should go in or not. You can call and there's a, there's a physician on call. Twenty-four, seven, where you can have a telehealth visit with them. Which is just another, another added benefit. They're kind of our on-call people, so. There's a little bit of information up here on that as well, so.
Yeah, I can, the concussion side of things, I can do the full concussion protocol. So the return to learn, return to play, sign them off, the whole, we can do that whole. And if we're here. Once a week, that's about perfect for concussion follow-up. So kiddos can get back to playing sooner rather than later, because they can't get into the concussion clinic or Sunnyview or wherever. It's fast enough for those follow-up.
I started as a social studies teacher, so when I heard the position was open, I was like, I wonder, should I go back? And, and I slowly just saw a lot of kids falling through the cracks. And then I got into social work. Um, I have ended up working for CPS. I've worked at a bunch of different halfway homes. I worked for Intermountain for severely emotionally disturbed kids. And when this position came open and the idea of being able to, to kind of step in the gap and see those kiddos. Cause I'd never removed a kid from a home or I never worked with a kid in any of the other homes that didn't have failure to thrive on their diagnosis somewhere. Didn't have. Or hadn't had a, a visit, a doctor or a dentist's visit within the past few years. And so that was just one of those things is maybe we can identify a few kiddos early. Um, I know it's, we never like to think of them being around all the time, but as educators, you know that they're. What kiddos are missing out on some of those things. And if we can just get a little bit of information to a few of those parents. It's super convenient. We're right here. Like, there's no excuses. Just come in and see us. And I, and I think we're seeing some of those kids in Big Fork. I think that we're actually being able to help. You know, one or two here and there is one or two that, you know, don't come into the system later on in some other way.
So you reach, you reach out to parents at, on a teacher's reference perhaps? To find those kids. You're not gonna find them walking the hallways.
No, I, and I, you know, I think that that would be where we could collaborate in a way of bringing some education in. If there's something that a parent or that a teacher sees, that, that's where I think the line gets blurry with. PRPA and HIPAA is what can you share and what can't you share? And I, I can't speak definitively of. If we could reach out on a, on a teacher's recommendation, but if a teacher comes to us and says, hey. I've got a kiddo that's struggling and this, this or this, we can come up with some educational materials or figure out a way to help. You know, I think every, every thing is situational. There's no two that are the same. How can we get there? And how can we help these people?
I guess my thought would be, you know, if you have a teacher and all of a sudden kiddo needs glasses, you know, can't, can't see from.
Yeah.
They are. Would they, what, would they? Would they refer that?
I'm not an ophthalmologist, but I can do vision screening.
Well, that, that would be the vision, the vision screening. At least they would make the parents aware perhaps that, that that's problem. And maybe they do it without. You as a go-between, but I'm just.
But I'm absolutely willing to help with that, even if I'm the first step to help get them the care they need. Or a teacher notices the kiddo is sick all the time and they just need a little, they, they have that strap that's been holding on. That might help just a little bit to help get them in the system and then we can help set them up with the resources that. Logan, Logan Health does have a ton of resources. We, um, that we, I literally have a, have a touch of my hand. I click a button and the resources come in.
Okay, Justin, do any other questions?
I don't have a question. We'll check tomorrow, so.
I think it's a good idea. I mean, I think it's, uh, great convenience to the community and, you know, we're inevitably all. Likely, a lot of us are going kind of to. You know. Sunnyview or others anyways, and it seems like a good service to bring community. So I mean, I just. Personally entertain looking at kind of the next steps of the contract and what gets involved there.
Yeah, I'd be happy to get, I'll get all that stuff to Maryland.
Sounds like the price is right to me.
He's good. Um, yeah, I'll get it. I'll get all this stuff to you tomorrow and the copies of what the clinic looks like and all those things. And you can share it with everybody and. And then we can further this conversation hopefully.
Right. So we, as this is an action item, so, um. Should we make a motion to, I guess, to pursue this?
I think we just have to make a motion to table until further information is obtained.
There we go. Okay.
Do you want to make a motion to table until further information? It is obtained.
All right.
A second.
All right. Any, any discussion? I was in favor, we'll table this motion for further information. Okay, thank you. And then we'll get this, we'll discuss this and it's.
We're gonna review, uh, forty-two policy changes. You guys wanna stay?
Okay, um, thank you. Now that qualification. Tina, did you have, um, we have in front of us the, um, application of, you know. A layer, Volta, Tana, Holder, Volta for the, um, math position at middle school. Um, Tina, had, did, did you wanna share something about that or as we leave there?
Um, well, she's currently teaching out at your park. She's been interested in working at West Valley before and, and applied before. Um, and then we've had, uh, where even, you know, Sarah Tegger, where she had her math endorsement and things in that area and we were. Looking more for that and had done a great job in the past. She lives on this side of the valley and she's interested in being here and continues to check in with us. And. Uh, great reviews about her. And again, it's just kind of a switch up of what the program looks like. In the middle school, you know, um. It's a matter of scheduling, uh, some strengths where that she has a K eight endorsement. And then a lot of training and experience in math. So with the K eight endorsements, a more flexible employee to be able to. Shift into other elements of teaching if needed, um, and also has her P E endorsement. And it's interested in coaching and being a part of the community.
So you are planning on having her teach math though, not social studies?
Yes.
Okay. So what's the plan of social studies?
It will get parceled out differently, just like math would have the other way. So just get. It'll get pieced out differently. And I'm looking at some of the things at sixth grade. And, um, at the sixth grade program overall, and then looking at seventh and eighth, and then maintaining that, um, accreditation standards. That we have to have for seven and eight. So it's just gonna be a matter of, um, making sure that all those pieces are covered. And looking back at staying at a six-period schedule instead of a seven, just trying to save that and that. Less presentation time for, or amount of times they have to present for teachers. And so it's just a matter of reconfiguring this whole thing around this and. The best of the candidates we had and, and fit for being able to have, um, experience at teaching that. But also the flexibility without that math endorsement.
The, the disadvantage is the pay scale. That it'll cost us another about thirteen thousand if they could. To get a, a math teacher as opposed to. Rather an experienced social studies teacher.
Looks like she's got great experience in math though.
It does. And we are weak. Where we can master it now there. I mean, there's.
We have games across the year, all across the school, but yes, it's a, it's a point that. You know, given a chance to go back and look at it, then I went back and reviewed that section and what can we do there?
And she'll be dedicated to math only with a certain grade? Or multiple grades or one?
Often they're gonna be in multiple grades and they see, I don't have anybody that just teaches strictly one grade because we have the kids in the math that they belong in.
Okay.
So you might be predominantly eighth, but you might have a seventh and, and eighth, and then you can have some mixed in any of those classes.
Okay.
But definitely looking at seventh and eighth and mainly, I guess you could say that, that eighth grade algebra. And it could be a stronger fit with that too. So. You wanna wait on Justin or? Not really, it's. A wage.
Maybe we could, there it goes. We're discussing this down below as a middle school math teacher.
Right.
Justin, I think.
I'll make a motion to hire Tana Holder as middle school math teacher.
Okay, are there any discussion? Right. I was in favor of hiring Tana Holder as a middle school math teacher. I opposed unanimous. So, yeah, it, you can get a hold of her. Let her know she's part of the team and go from there. Hey, thank you. All right, next, uh, discussion, possible, impossible action posting vacant para-professional positions. I understand we already have para-professional positions posted on our website, right?
So those were never removed, no, I mean, from. A few meetings back, um, right? We, when we were doing the budgeting, we removed all previously vacant para-positions to accommodate. The budget basically. Um, so with the vacancy from the two that we previously approved tonight. Those are still budgeted for. So I think we just needed some clarification as moving forward. Where these belong, if we're retiring, what would we kind of, where we need to go with these.
And those are both spent positions, is that correct?
Yeah, the, on the resignation for life skills. So we had two open and posted, but.
Yes, they should have came down, but we didn't really get that clarification.
Nat only going forward have two open at this point.
Yes. Yeah, so these are the only two that were budgeted for. Because we just got the resignations within the last week or so.
And so you guys said we have applicants.
Yeah.
Which is great for not taking it down.
Right. Great efforts.
That's, that's great, yeah. Um, I, I'd be in favor of. So the other two closing then, and then we're reopening these two, or we're just leaving it open?
I think, like, I think we just need a clarification.
Okay.
Which is why.
Because if we close the previous and have applicants and they have to reapply if we reopen.
Right. And some of them have just recently applied, like in the last week. So when Cindy Foley and I had been working on the budget.
Hmm.
And we were doing the negotiations and trying to figure out what we had left and where we were. We wanted to get as close as possible. So we. I believe there was discussion about taking all vacant positions out to accommodate the salary increase. And so. I just wanted clarification, which is why I put this in here. Who's getting the paras? Who do we need to replace? Are we replacing? And I know we have a custodial person that we need to replace. We have the food service that we need to replace. I just want, I don't wanna leave it open and then not have the budget for it. So that's why I was. Put this in there. It's just a confirmation, like, where are we going with this?
And every, everything that we would have opened, open for, be considering was it kind of a pre-lost budget that we're sort of reviewing so far.
Yes.
Which it seems like we've trimmed paras down to, you know. You know, a position or two below, well, below adequate or below sustainable.
I think currently we have four, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we have four para-professionals and then middle school. And with these two leaving, that leaves seven in.
No, not quite that many. I can find out.
So according, I mean, according to my payroll, that's what I'm showing, so I guess I do need that.
That's meaning, like, we need five to run the middle school, right?
Right now, we have four on, like, ten to five because of one-on-one situations.
Right now, we would only have Julia, Blair, Shauna, Carla, and I'm gonna put this in there. Alexa, she's gonna teach two classes of art as well. So her time will be over. And then Julia, exactly, Julia's position is gonna be affected too because she's long-term, so for a second grade teacher. Take her out of the pool. At least through November. January?
Yes.
January.
So how many is that then on elementary?
It was six names, but maybe four and a half functional, right?
And on the budget custodial wise, is there, cause wasn't there one that was vacant that was in the budget?
Yes.
But now is this a different custodial?
No, that would be replacing Arlene who's leaving at the end of June. What her contract said.
Is she still a point seven five or according? Six hours a day?
I think so. But I think Bill really needs a full time, so it'd be additional two hours.
Mm-hmm.
Um. And then with the other custodian out currently, I don't even know what that's gonna look like going forward as well.
So, right now it's the health issues.
Yes, so right now it's Arlene and Sophia, that's it.
And the, the, um, they, the vacancy is listed on the website right now, is Arlene's diets. So we just leave that hopefully, but we have, we had any interest at all.
So once we get the and with the um food service, um, I will resend it out to the paper at least and get it back on.
Thank you.
The website, you know, get it out there again and just re get the visibility out there for.
Cause we're, we budgeted for point seven five janitor. And so this, uh, yeah, this Arlene, her position would be only places that I'd rate. I mean, is that what?
I think that one, she doesn't work an eight-hour day, she works the six.
And what's Sova coming back for? But how many, how many is Sova? So we have Joe Sova and then how much it does Roline do, two hours?
Do not.
She's not gonna do Amber, so we have Sova, Yulia, I'm saying her name wrong, I'm sorry. And then we have Julia.
So.
Julia, okay, we don't have Julia, then you have Blair.
Yes.
And Alexa. But she's a parent.
Yeah.
Right, however you use her, she's a parent, and then you have Alexa, right, we just talked about her and you have Shauna.
Yes.
Carla. So missing. Do you have someone else lead towards the end between Heather, besides Heather and?
We had several.
Shannon went to Claire's.
Yeah, but we weren't.
Well, she was.
Our crew was cutting how? This year, so like from fourteen to seven.
Yeah, all of us, I think.
Yeah. We just try to sound even more this year.
How many this actually is?
I think gotta hash it out, sort of, where they're at and, you know, that could be a good thing to kinda talk about during the budget meetings to kinda line that out. I feel, I feel like we're, you know, we're at, you know, these were included in our prelim budget, we were relatively comfortable with the prelim budget, I think. We need to, I think we need to replace uh these positions. So, yeah. The two that are open are within the budget.
Yes.
If we add in these two, they would be within the budget as well?
No, so, well, so the two that, so the two that we just accepted the resignation, so Heather and Paula, they were both in the budget, that's it.
And the two that we already have open.
No, no.
Just going to be additions to the budget.
Two, do you know how much para F T E you had total, if you have that accessible, if you know how much was budgeted and not by the person, but how many total in that position? Offhand, okay.
And when we say budget, this is just a very prelim.
Preliminary, yes, right, so. So there's no extra like placeholder, so these were, I won't say they're placeholders, because before we had placeholders for like Erin, Shannon, we were trying to hold those positions, but then when, I mean, just going through that summary page that we were working on for negotiations, we took everything out, made it bare bones.
That was just the certified staff that we had approved at that meeting.
The only reason that these two are in there is because they were planning on coming back until the last week, week and a half or so. And so that's why they are budgeted for.
So are you suggesting that the two that were posted were not actually anticipated in this preliminary question?
Yeah.
That's what I'm trying to.
Yeah, and, and the only reason we didn't take them down was we didn't have clear enough direction on, I, I didn't have clear enough direction. I didn't wanna take them down without anybody's approval.
So now advertisers to para positions and.
And I think there are probably, I mean, I think I've seen probably what, four applicants recently, I mean, there's.
Yeah, I mean, really, they did, you just, you just kind of solidify that we'll hire the two, we accept their resignations here and then, then you look at the four that applicants that we have in place, so hopefully it'll be a smooth process.
Yeah, at the, at the budget meeting and we can discuss whether we
have money to open up for two women.
More, correct.
But we know we have, we know we can hire two and we know we can hire a janitor and we know that we can hire a food service.
Yeah, those are all covered.
Those are all covered, yeah, so we, we get those out safely, surely, okay.
It's the custodian, cause I believe it's close to the school.
Okay.
Is it? I believe that's what the email said. I can't remember.
I know when Stowe was in and he, was that um the word special we did, he came in. I think, I think it was discussed that it was full-time.
Okay, but I know it needs full-time.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, that's, then we make it full-time, as a full-time jan position then, so when if we get calls on that, we'll be able to say.
So it is posted as full-time, because we gave it to Kat, I mean.
I think it's posted as full-time, because the job description doesn't say, like, I don't remember putting point seven five.
It's not on the, it's not on the website, it's point seven. It, it's janitor.
Yeah, and I think if you click on the submittable, it doesn't say point seven five, like, it just says.
Okay, yeah.
Well, we can surely use.
Yeah, it does say eight hours a day.
Okay, yeah, that's what I thought.
I think we should leave it at that. What do you think? Rather than, I mean, I think we can use a full-time as opposed to a point seven five.
Point seven five, what's ours on there?
So it would be, I think like five to whatever they want, eleven or Sophia comes in like at three and they get down about eleven or so.
Really, just full-time through the school year?
So this year, um, Bill had it changed to where they are working all summer, but Arlene's done June thirty. And then Sophia's here, you have some time off in July, August, so she's mostly full-time, but and then um the other one is here all summer and then Phil and.
And they all work like eight hours right now a day.
Okay, so we need a motion to, that the, the action, I said this discussion and possible action posting vacant para professional positions. Um. So we had a motion to do that, um, it doesn't say anything about posting the food service supervisor position.
So that it was up, 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 up there where she resigned. These two with the job posting that we currently had, that's where I need the clarification.
Do they have different? Do they have different job descriptions? No. So you just wanna pretty much know if we keep them open or if we close them and reopen, is what you wanna know?
No, I just wanna know if we're hiring two and if we're going forward with that. Or not, or if we're leaving, if we're cutting and sticking with the two resignations and keeping it where we are.
I'll make a motion to hire, to just use the same, if it's the same job description, use the same opening that you have currently for those two para positions that we just approved their resignations.
That's second.
Any discussion?
Just to clarify, that's just to continue what's already open.
Yeah, that's right, I mean, it's the same thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, then they don't have to reapply.
Yeah.
So when, I just get lots of emails questioning who's hiring and who's not, and so that's why I just need clarification.
That's great, yeah, that's good.
Cause it's not, it's not my duty to say yes for her or not, so I'm just excluding myself from this situation. That's ultimately what I wanted here.
So this motion will give you clarity. Clarity and say that, yes, we are posting to vacant para, and we are hiring, actually. We're posting so that we can hire two vacant para professional positions.
Should we also add on to that motion a cust- a custodial?
So that one has been open, so that one.
That's been.
Yeah. Okay, so that's.
Food service one, do we have to wait until we make that an action item or we put that on?
Typically, it's not, in the past, it hasn't been, like I said, this one, I'm just excluding myself from making that decision if middle school gets a parent or elementary gets a parent or.
Yeah, I don't think we have to improve the posting of the job.
That's right, so, okay, so you're clear now.
Yeah, so we're opening two positions. Para positions and that's.
That's right, yes, okay, that's what the motion is, and seconded, all right. Any more discussion on that, all right, all in favor of that?
Alright.
Okay, anybody posed, all right, unanimous, um. As far as the food service supervisor being.
Yep, and that one's.
We just post that along with the janitor and the two para positions, all right? Okay, thank you. All right, the replication of twenty-three, twenty-four F Y contracts. Nothing.
This could be a printed packet that I gave you that um with a few parts to it there. And then it's the highlighted part, I believe, are the changes. And then once it's approved, I'll mesh these together.
Yeah, so there'll be like this sheet. There's another sheet there too, because there's some changes like in the minutes document and then there's some and then they'll get meshed into one. Um, so the West Valley Teachers Association membership, they did voted um in favor of the proposal on Monday, as you can see at the top there, even fifth. For this, so it's just, we just need to approve it as a board and then sustain all the changes in the document.
And then we approve the revised document in August? So the.
Well, I see, when I understood is that the yellow changes. I just got the key to this, I was talking to. Right, so I just got the key, so it says, um, yellow is existing language that will be discussed. And then from what I understand, this was all approved, this one at the.
Correct, yeah.
The teacher, last teacher, correct, okay. And then on this one, the pink is agreed upon. What else for blue?
The pink was. Tentative agreement, tentative P A.
So the teal says it's all new.
Well, and we might yet need to sit down again, the four of us or five, however many of us there are and go through and just say, oh yeah, this is what it looks like, this is, because I haven't looked back at that original, original document. Um, so we might wanna do that before it's actually ratified.
Yeah.
Maybe tonight we just approve it.
I think that was, that was the plan, was we were just gonna improve, you know, kind of
approve the overall terms.
That were changed, you know, in, in.
And then ratify the contract after we have time to sit down and look at it, because we just haven't had the time.
Yeah, and we had those meetings planned for, I think, we had some.
We had it in early July or.
July, early August. So we have all summer to, or most of summer to actually finalize the language here.
So when am I doing new contracts for the teachers?
Maybe the first week at school? I just don't, I know we talked about this, I don't know how we can get it done sooner.
Because we don't have to, it doesn't.
It's not gonna change anything.
Until first.
It's September twentieth, right. Did you have a good representation of people that signed their first one? Uh, we have people with unsigned contracts.
Recertification.
There's some kind of dissatisfaction down there or something.
There was only a couple, I think, that didn't.
Um, there was some confusion that we tried to clear up and, yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah, I think we just wanted to at least like get the approval of the board over what, you know, the teachers association had approved. And then they can work, we'll fully ratify the document maybe in August, at that August meeting. That's, cause I think there's gonna be more work, like, trying to merge these two documents, there's gonna be a lot of work.
It is. Totally, this is mainly more informational from, exactly, the board members who went to these meeting, giving us the information so we can see it today before we have the final package later on. Correct, yeah, so maybe we can just go like this document.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the first, the first item, which I think was discussed, obviously, was the two percent increase on the base. Number two, the insurance, so this is the changes where we're gonna give the teachers the option to opt out of the insurance pool, which we kind of all slip by, was the better financial option, so in lieu of getting the insurance and the six thousand dollar contribution towards that insurance, if they don't need that insurance, they'll get a fifteen hundred dollar cash benefit payment in lieu of that insurance, so that's that net difference, you know, it was able to kind of save the district money that we were able to put towards that two percent raise. The uh item number three, so this was a change in the daily sub-rate. And then the idea here was to um try to increase the cash payout at the end of the year for unused uh personal leave days. And so the, we kind of talked, two sides of it were, you know, one side was saying you get paid out at your daily rate, every teacher has a different daily rate. And the other side, we said, well, we wanna kind of try to structure this to give new teachers, younger teachers, maybe an additional incentive to uh A, come work with us and then B, to, you know, not use all those personal days, because obviously sub-time is, subs are hard to come by. So the, the three hundred dollars per day is basically roughly kind of the midpoint of, you know, the daily rate for teachers, but it's, it's above the daily rate for a new teacher, so really this will give them kind of a, hey, I'm gonna, you know, I'm gonna save those personal leave days so I can cash it out at the end of the year and as a result, we don't have to kind of deal with the substitutes, so it was, it was kind of, that was the idea behind it.
So it doesn't say here three hundred dollars a day, but.
I think it doesn't have.
Gotcha, right, yeah.
So the number four, so the um, so we're adjusting the accrual on personal leave, they can still only take the same amount per year, but they're just able to accrue an additional one day per uh per school year.
So we still get the four personal days a year?
Yeah.
It used to be we could only approve five, so you could roll over one day.
One day, yeah.
Which means the cruel number seven. So theoretically, you could, of your four, you could save three and roll them over for the next year to attach to your next four, and then there, there's language that shows different ways of getting another personal day. And that's there as well. And which was already existing language in the contract. Um, buying, buying a essentially exchanging some of your sick days to buy a personal day. Um, it used to be a five to one ratio, changed it to a four to one ratio, so you could actually buy an extra personal day if you were going on a trip or something, and then you can also purchase one at the daily sub-rate.
And then you can also purchase one at the daily sub-rate. Yeah, that didn't move here.
And I'd be down here, so this is gonna be current, and then this is proposed, yeah.
Yeah, so they can roll over three, but they can't exceed seven, they get four grand. Number five was, uh, the sick leave accrual, bank from ninety-five to, to one hundred and eight days.
You just increased it by thirteen.
The, uh, you know, the amount that they get is still the same, it's just they can accrue more, right, they're not accruing. Any more per year, they can just save up more than they used to be able to. Number six, the, um, earn comp day, so obviously in the scenario we're at right now, we have a lot of, uh, teachers covering recess. So this was effectively, you know, as long as that continues and we're in kind of this para, you know, crunch. We thought we could provide kind of a morale incentive, uh, to the teachers so that they could earn. So they would, they would create more opportunity to earn that extra comp day, um, throughout the year by covering the recess duty. So it's, uh, it's kind of, you know, if we get in the budget scenario where we have ample paras that, that can do recess, then we no longer would have to kind of. Agree and do this, but for the time being, um, while they're out there doing it, it's kind of a, you know. Felt like a, you know, a way to make it easier for them to do that and make, provides some incentive and, and maybe kind of a little morale to, to go out there. You know, when it's. Thirty degrees, so.
Potentially, it helps when people are planning for a year, you know, when Richard's looking at recess duty, he knows that, oh, I have this. This pool of people who will gladly do it.
That's right.
So the, uh, stipend schedule. So we understand that part right though, it's a, for every fifteen minutes. They're helping out. That adds up each time to a total of one day. Yeah, so that makes sense, yeah, so like probably fifteen minutes, they get a day.
Correct.
Yeah, go, they go cover le- recess and then just leave. See you somehow.
Right now.
That's, that makes sense.
And it's offered at the end of the year. Yeah.
Offered at the end of the year, and then can be used like in that next year.
Yeah, so for the first year, you won't really feel it. Because it will be awarded at the end of the year, but then you can use it for the next year.
Yeah.
So really, they don't want to have to give them. Really four shifts, and they get that year to roll over for the next, or that day to roll over to the next year.
Yeah.
That incentivizes people to help out a little bit, I think. So number seven, uh, the stipends for, um, you know, the, the awarded stipends for doctoral's masters.
And if you look on the next page, it's.
Look at the next page. So those were, the doctoral stipend is new. Um, previously, that would have just been the six percent master's, I think, these don't stack, so if you. You have a masters, you got, you get six, if you have a doctoral, you get seven and a half, you don't get six plus seven and a half. And, uh, then we, those longevity stipends are, are the same. And, uh. Yeah, that's, uh, did I explain that right?
Yeah, I think the only other thing was, oh, but maybe you're in the, the extra crepe for the gap.
Class one stipend, um. Had, I think, I think we had good intent on that, I don't know how applicable it's gonna be. It might end up getting kind of revised on the next, but it did, ended up being, there's, I don't think there's gonna be really. Anybody there, we were trying to give kind of a stepping stone between. Very bachelors and, uh, masters through a certification there, but I don't think it really ended up being the right, but it was, it was a little late in the negotiation to kind of.
It's career and technical that you can get, cause most of the time, if you have a masters, you get a class one, that's the type of certificate you get. But there are some career and technical avenues where you might be a class one teacher without a masters. Is what I think you were trying to honor.
Yeah, we're trying to.
Here in the school, but they're out there. Yeah. It kind of fell away from us.
Yeah.
They are real, they're out there. The best of intentions, and then we went, wait. We left it there, just in case it makes sense later, but we're, there's teachers in that spot, though. And just nobody.
And there's more career and technical gets called out on, and as we're now more alternative licenses.
Yes, it didn't really, that wasn't, it didn't really. Here. At this point, so it might, it, it'll likely be something that's revisited next year.
It's gonna be free.
Yeah, a free change, right? Uh, so eight, the, uh, extracurricular stipend, so we, we're trying, here we tried to kind of clarify the. Head coach, assistant coach. Um, confusion that had kind of permeated, so basically, you know, we have our. Defined extracurricular activities here, the pay scale is for the head coach. And then the assistant coach for, if needed for each one of these, if, if the board and et cetera likes to hire that position, will get paid a half a percent less. So that just provides kind of this consistent pay structure across, uh, across the scale. It was the football seemed to be the scenario where some were getting paid, you know, head coach stipend, some were getting paid five hundred, so this is just kind of clarifying it. Across those. And this has nothing, nothing to do with non. Teachers. Correct, this is only the, this is the, only the pay scale for a teacher. At this point, the pay scale's the same for non-teachers. Do you know if these were all kind of calculated off of estimated? I'm spent.
Yeah.
Put into these things, or is it? The football coaches were louder than the cross-country coaches, or is it?
Terry worked out the time and amount of time of kids and it was based on responsibility, yeah.
That was the idea.
Yeah.
Appreciate that. And those, all those, um, outside of the clarifying this. Assistant coach stipend, all these percentages are the same as they were last year. So they weren't, uh, they changed, so. Just gotta clarify. Other than clarifying the assistance. Yeah, yeah.
And then we, didn't we add in the extracurricular, um. We added in this extracurricular, I mean, cause it came up, like, what if we wanna do a baseball team, or, you know, something to kind of have a filler in there? If we were to add something like at the board down the road.
Yeah, so this is just to kind, cause it is under their contract, so it's just to make sure we have kind of a placeholder for position. Um, if it is, you know, be added, a different sport in between contract negotiations.
That was just an example, not that we are. Yeah. Just so we had something in there.
You start from.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's it, so, um. Kind of an overview of what we spent like forty-six hours discussing.
And thank you. Okay, so we are called onto a motion to, um, accept the. The teacher's contract is here. Or do we?
So I think our motion is to table the ratification until we have.
Okay.
Will this approve this and then table?
Or do we need an appro- approval of this?
Proven, appreciate the board's recommendations to the contract so far.
Did you get that? Approve down this. Appreciate, appreciate.
Well, as a, as a board, we're just recognizing that we're agreeing with what you guys have worked on so far.
Correct.
Yeah, we just, yeah.
We're not really ratifying the final contract yet.
Yeah, we figured it'd be good to get your guys' approval, knowing exactly where we are.
However you want it, it works.
That's why I like, I appreciate the, oh, it's like they're rewinding.
Yeah, 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 it sounded good.
Okay, so.
Yeah, I think you, I think again, you could say. Or approves the negotiated terms of the contract. You know. You know. Depends on.
Later meeting.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. That's on a good old second thought.
Okay, any more discussion? All right, all those in favors, just believe if you want, we get that.
The ones I'm gonna rewind and watch again. And then I'll, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna accept the, in, in, in proof.
The recommendations of the board here, of the board representatives. We'll let that. In any case, that's what we've, we've basically done is accepted this, and now it's gonna go forward so that we can ratify at a future meeting. Right?
Yep.
All in favor? Post. That's. I have district attendance should be these one, two students attending classroom, they, they keep sending me docu-signing to do this, so. There are two students, they have to go over to F Green, but you, you probably know more than I do.
You got it. Or there's two of them that they need, um, the attendance agreement was signed on, so. And I. They're currently, I mean, in the current school year, they were there, so they're just continuing.
That's continuation.
I'll make a motion. Motion, a second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Unanimous, quit contract for twenty-three, twenty-four. Decline this.
Table this.
Um. So this one, the only thing that I added was the cell phone stipend that we had approved, I think it was in February. Otherwise, it should be this.
Motion to approve. Contract for Cecilia Loulou Allen. Second it.
Any discussion?
All this, big thank you.
Yeah, thank you for sure, especially she just came out of a week-long training session. So she's.
Done most now, like I got nothing.
Uh, so we're glad, we are glad to have her. Um, all those in favor of, now is there any more discussion? All those in favor of, it's to, so you, what outlines, quick contract application? I, I opposed. I unanimous, MQEC renewal, now this one.
This one. We have the little link was kicked in my rear, so I printed it for you, okay. Um, so we got the renewal.
Not, not true.
In the email, I wasn't very clear on what it was.
Um, it looks like a lobbyist to me.
So it's the Montana Quality Educators Coalition, um. There you go, that's all I. Yeah, I think. From what I kind of understood from Cindy Foley is that they go to legislator or advise on legislative. I don't know if it's in conjunction with MTSBA, to be honest, um. Separate. I just really wasn't very clear, sorry, I did attach the front page of their website, I heard it just giving a little background of what they do. That gives you guys enough of what you can. And did we do this last year?
I think so. Pretty sure we, uh, let's see. If I can find out how far we've done that. How far back? It's a good question. I think, I think the MTSBA. A lot is to myself.
tend to agree with you, I think it's. Me, it's probably an easy expense to cut for next year.
Mm-hmm. And they, and they don't meet this next year, right? So. I'm not sure we need to spend that, I'd rather put that two thousand towards that, no?
Go to.
They work towards funding overall, so they, they help figure out with the funding. The amount, how that's going to be distributed, where it's going to come from, and how it's going to be distributed, and they've made great differences in the funding in the past, because. It, they, you know, things have had to go to court before, because, um, schools are underfunded in Montana by the different. By different elements, right, and so we used to have like the coal money, or we have timber dollars, or we have, and. I don't, I don't know what the deadline is, but it might be worth meeting about it and really understanding what they do, as they advocate for financing the schools for all schools.
I, I agree, like, in general, you know, advocating for additional funding, I just don't know if the approach is. You know, the most effective approach to, you know, pay. Um, kind of a third party to do it, I, I feel like. You know, if you really, you know, maybe they've had, they've obviously probably had some successes in the past, and maybe they'll go from, you know, over a hundred to ninety-nine that are still pitching in.
I just noticed on the invoice there, it does say. Um, Article X, Montana Constitution. I don't know, that would give more information, like I just, I, I just didn't really know what it was, so.
So I guess we need to know that we're on to. Table it and get more information, or do we want to exit, or?
I'd be fine table on it for until August, yeah.
Shall we table it for the August, this is. Yeah, I mean, we have MTSBA on here too later, so should we, should we table this one and, and maybe look into what it really does?
Well, I'm just going at their board directors, and the board directors are of all, or just all of the state. Yeah. Hope it's small, but. I mean, not to be like, be cheaper.
I mean, if we're slashing.
You kept the same.
Then the cost, we possibly can. If, if I'm looking at. What, like paper or classroom supplies that desperately is needed versus a membership. That we're not really sure quite what it does, like that, even if it's just for one year. Might help us get over the hump in some way.
For sure.
It's not like we don't do it, it's gonna fall by its face. We'll still get the benefit, usually, oh, I'd say I'd do it too, at this point. Those are most big schools have got reps, and they've got more money than anyone.
Well, we'll see how good they are, cause if we table it, we'll see if somebody shows up. We can tell note of their face.
What's that?
Yeah, or we hold it for this year, knowing our constraints are in.
I'm gonna do that too.
I have a pretty good, I mean, I feel like I have a good idea what they do, I.
I doubt it, though, I, I can't see a scenario where it's gonna make me wanna, um. Wanna buy into this two thousand dollars. Um, I, I can't really foresee pushing it down the road where that, that happened, I think.
Yeah.
I'll pretty much know. So.
Well, I'll make a motion to, um, not renew the MQEC contract for the. Twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Yes, I'll second. Any, any further discussion? So now like we can't join this. In another year, if, once we get back.
I'm sure they'd let us in halfway through if we decided, maybe whatever.
That's right, it's not an hour and everything, so, okay.
Yeah, I was just continuing reading, but.
What's that?
I'm just reading on their website real quickly, but.
I mean, it seems like important work, but. So is.
Two thousand is a lot of money to, uh, at this point.
Sure.
Might not be to. Somebody else goes towards paying that extra teacher. Anything else on it?
Exciting, there's a lot of reading involved. Nice reading, this is a lot of the smaller things that are said, so.
Do we wanna table it then for later?
We have a motion on the floor to renew it. Do we have second on that?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have a motion to second, so we're discussing, all right, all those in favor of. Yeah, we have a motion to second, so we're discussing, all right, all those in favor of non-renewing the MQEC contract. They I.
I.
Oh, can we have a negative thought?
Never know how to word that.
Approve it, we just approved non-renewal.
That's okay, approving non-renewal is positive, right? Okay, all those in favor of approving approving non-renewal of the Q into E C contract. That I.
I.
Opposed. Right, that unanimous. A facility improvement contract. I'm not sure what that is.
So they do all of our maintenance on our H back.
Oh.
Um. So. And. Down the informational. Uh, later on, you'll see there is. I think when we did that work session, Phil was asked to get that quote for that. Um. Rooftop unit.
Oh, yeah.
And so they would be the ones, you know, that. Would do that, they do our H back, they did the quarterly maintenance. Um. They come in, if we have fans that go. Bad in the kitchen, they can then fix those, so this is just their annual contracts.
Okay. And that's budget, I mean, as far as we can.
It comes out of the building where it's their fund. Um, there are these, yes, yeah, so that's separate in the general. So it's, and as far as I know, they've been doing it for quite a while.
Sixteen.
Any maintenance work they do is above and beyond the. The amount on the contractor, what is it, six thousand?
Sixteen.
Or sixty six hundred, yeah. So if they had to come out and replace something or do maintenance. To phrase that, maintenance is covered. Um, but as far as like fixing something or repairing something, it would be above that sixty six hundred.
How often they can not do maintenance?
Uh, quarterly, so four times a year. Or, yeah, the maintenance, they come out and. Check over these four times.
So I check the. Unit, yeah. That was, it's been really old.
Is there other companies that do this too? I would assume so, but I don't, I mean, I don't know. Um. So if you go with them, are you like, say, if we have to replace the unit, you have to use whoever they go through, you know?
I don't know, actually.
And they just wonder if you can get like multiple bids or if you have to go through whoever they recommend or what.
That kind of thing.
If I even remember correctly, there was a vendor at the Cross Press, I think it was called the Kinstry.
And.
And I think they did. Something similar to this.
Yeah.
So. I don't know. Just wondering if we maybe get another bid from another person.
That was actually when you get filled to. You should be working directly with.
You know, if you're with somebody forever, then your prices just keep creeping up.
Okay, well, look at what happened with the security in once we thought we had. Person and then. Have to somebody done. So maybe we should do that with these people. So should we hate this and um, have sort of look into any quotes? Yeah.
Yeah, it'd be nice to have, I mean. I can get the quarterly maintenance, but it'd be nice to understand, like, fill in what's make, yeah.
And are we. We need a new heating system, do we have to use other people or?
Right, right, so what we need to do properly is. Um, table this and and this was still. Fine, um. Hold on the whole situation, right?
Yeah.
Make motion then a table it, maybe get another bit from the Kinstry, you said.
I think that's what it was.
Or a different company.
Sure.
And just get more information.
Mm hmm.
Yeah, so my country does, it says. Construction, energy and facility services for residential. Commercial, oh my gosh. Uh, government, educational hospitality, so they, yeah, I'm pretty sure that's what it was.
You hear about like Johnson Controls to doing all those.
Mm hmm.
Energy efficiency retrofits.
Okay, so, um. We have a motion to to table this facility improvement contract. And to get some other bids. And maybe get a presentation from Phil on what it really entails.
I'll second table it until we get more information.
All right, is that a second, women? Okay, um. Yeah, discussion, either the discussion.
Uh, is it possible to have Phil narrow it down to like two or three and then invite them to come in like we do the insurance and just have them give a presentation for you or to talk to you about it with? So you can question like that, like, are we locked in, are we?
Sure.
Absolutely.
That because you see they have very good elective questions between you, but they might not get asked.
Sure.
But maybe invite two in just to do a five minute.
Sure.
So you can compare and and see what their their best bet is in the.
Okay, um. You want to touch though about that? Okay. So you can talk to Phil about that, that that's a great idea. So maybe our August meeting, I'll have some. Concrete information to to deal with our. We. I. All those in favor of. Abbling this facility improvement contract until we get more information.
I.
I, anybody opposed? I catch unanimously, letting special education cooperative preschool program. And star program, I suppose, we can put them together. And. Really. You know, no super sure, is the star program, is that the speech?
Star is um, for communications disorders, so.
Yes.
The one is our, and Richard can jump in here, because he has children that are here in the preschool, so the special education cooperative. Are obviously for preschool age children in need. Um, age three to five. And then the star would be the communications, and both of those are cooperatives that we join. Um, and. On the anticipation that we would have a child that might need that, then we're part of that group. And they can enter those students into that program, similar to what it would like crossroads.
True, but we don't pay for them, I mean. There's no money involved to join this co- cooperative, is there?
Yeah, so, um. Earlier in the, um. And the claims, so there was like the Evergreen School District. Um, and then the plot had special education co-op, so those are part of that, so Evergreen would be the crossroads. And then a special education co-op, and that comes out of our tuition fund. So we're building a rear on those, so. All of our students that went through that program this year.
Mm hmm.
I build my budget over for it over the summer, and then that goes out. To the taxpayers, to that permissive levy to pay for that.
Okay.
So.
How many do we have involved right now? Um, and crossroads, we have the two preschool and one, we're going on three, right? Three next year in crossroads, sorry.
Or maybe a new younger. That's gonna be. For three total, the two plus the.
Believe in, you haven't been in the I P's of the preschool, so I don't believe we have any preschoolers right now, we've had in the past, right? Oh, one leaving there, it comes. Okay. I don't know. But it seems like every year we seem to have.
We have a couple, yeah.
In the preschool program.
So you sure you had three maybe and.
Yeah, so early specials, early special education need. Right, though.
So do we, for twenty three twenty four? Do we have kind of a rough estimate on this? For our budget? Like our preliminary budget?
Plugging the tuition fund.
Or is that gonna?
I base tuition fund off of what we went off of this year, but I won't get those statements from the co-op in Crossroads until. Probably July. And then that's what I build the budget off of. To send to. You know.
But it's in that tuition fund, right?
It is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But you don't expect it to be.
So then we approve that budget in August.
Mm hmm.
And so it'll be that plus our special. Okay, this one, so our special ed aides that we build into that tuition fund, a portion of the the aides come out of there. And so on that preliminary budget that you have for today, it's based off of what we currently have, just because I haven't gotten that information from the co-op or the county. Or I mean, crossroads.
Is is crossroads the TX program?
Oh, on the preliminary?
Yeah.
Please.
If it's just twenty two thousand per second semester. This number is not gonna be even close to right, likely.
Well, and it is based off how many students you have, so if we had only one the year before, and maybe we had three this year.
And we had two this year, but Richard was. We will have.
I think it's about thirty three thousand a year for the tuition to go.
Okay.
I don't know about the early education, but that's how much it is for the K eight at the Crossroads.
Okay.
And then we pay it. Just a bit that it's there and you're allowed to front that because you get it in arrears from permissive levy.
Okay, so you.
So that's.
So that Kyla one is on the wrong.
That comes back to us from our taxpayers.
Okay.
In addition to what we had been previously getting.
Okay.
So on that, um, on this one here, that one that's on the Kyla line, it should be down one under the preschool.
Oh.
So that's right, so one is the. Special education, and then the other one is the. Crossroads. I don't actually know what the Kyla one is, that should be probably up to. I'll make a motion to approve the preschool program and the start program, but find special education cooperative.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the preschool and star program, but the flag is special education cooperative. I.
I.
And I opposed. Game unanimous, transportation claims, they do the bus routes here.
So this is what I submit to the county. And to the state for our reimbursement. So part of it comes from county funds, part of it comes from state funds.
Thanks.
And so, um. We have one currently that is a parent that drives their student until we reimburse them a portion of the. The cost to transfer. Yes.
So is this all permitted, then, just the bus and? That's for me.
No, this is what the state reimbursed us for those costs, so a portion of it comes from county, a portion of it's from the state, so that forty nine. Forty nine thousand that comes from the state, that's just what the state puts in for transportation. Our buses cost. More than that, but that's just what they kick in.
Does the more than that come from the general fund though, or the permissive levy, permissive?
Yeah, no transportation costs come from the general fund.
I just had one question on that. So the gold bus.
Yes.
Travels a hundred miles per day.
Stood out to me too.
Yeah.
It's a special education bus that goes to crossroads every day.
Oh.
And it goes door to door, so.
Oh.
The student lives up, draws, and then has to go, and they. That's our parent supported best. And there's, yeah, like eight or twelve students on there, so, yeah, it gets, it gets.
Yeah.
That's a good, that was just the title. I'm anything motion, it's. The. Yes, it's a transportation claims.
Make a motion to approve the transportation plans.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
I opposed. Dave Jerry unanimously. MTSBA renewal.
So this one, we had discussed in. February, maybe March, and we had tableed it. At that point.
We did, because of the amount it is.
The renewal is due July one.
And it's five thousand. One hundred eighty three dollars.
Yeah, and that's.
Is that like the policy?
It is budget, yeah.
Well, I'd like to think we don't need the MTSBA, but we do.
Well, the the trading and resource there is is useful, and I know I used to.
Well, it's also nice to be able to call and. Get a response, like. Today, I asked him about these policies and. And on, you know, it's coming from a lawyer who works with this stuff every day.
I'm not really sure of an, you know, an alternative other than being. You know, kind of. A lawyer yourself, so that's it's kind of the. Only.
Well, isn't that who provided us with all the updated policies?
Mm hmm.
So.
So you have.
You meter at someone's time and the mistakes that could possibly come from that, I think right there alone.
Okay, great.
And training, like pays for itself.
Keeping track of all the hospitals that are just.
Yeah. And that's not, it's not gonna change. Education's gonna be there for a while.
That the MTSBA lawyer actually worked with legislators. And so he knew what the house goes well about, so we could apply to policies directly. It's just stuff comes.
Yeah, I think this one's more beneficial than the other one.
I mean, for us, right? Okay. Motion to approve the MTSBA renewal. For twenty three twenty four, I'll second it. Any more discussion on that?
I I just wanted to say that MTSBA is very beneficial for my area because we have to have student data privacy agreements, and sometimes vendors may change it to them.
Uh huh.
And I have to contact MTSBA to make sure that their changes still match with. A tail off. So if you don't have that resource, then there's no. Support for me to make sure that we are meeting Montana law.
Thank you.
They allow us principals to like up to a certain amount of time on a certain issue before they charge. Whereas having some questions or any clarifications and. Not having SROs and things, I thought that helpful, helpful to.
You mean, you don't want to be a lawyer too on top of everything else?
Richard. I'm the FBI, he's. Look, there's kind of true. Okay, so all those in favor of the MTSBA renewal?
I. Right.
I. Anybody opposed? To ask unanimously, Montana Schools Property and Liability Insurance Proposal.
Nice for a lawyer, mediator, maybe.
This is our renewal for the year, and then. We think everybody should have that in there, hopefully that was the link that worked.
It did work.
That one didn't work, yes.
Yeah.
Um, so on this one, it did go up. Being about two thousand dollars for last year, so I had to adjust the budget on that one. The next one on the agenda is the workers' comp, which is also part of the same.
Hmm.
And so that one as well went up just. About. Two thousandish as well.
And these, we only have, did we get other quotes on these three?
We did not this year.
Okay.
Um, I did speak to the other representative that we had been with, so it's like ninety something. Um, and if we want to get a quote from him, he could not do it until October first.
Those those. Workers' comp insurance.
That's the.
Because that's the one we switched.
M S train.
I think there's too many acronyms with this.
I think.
Whoever, wherever Sean Bub works for.
So how does it work if we walk in and approve this, or and then we get another quote in October that's, you know, say less, can we get out of this one and transfer and lock it?
I believe so, but I, um.
Well, the state fund was a cheaper alternative.
Last year was quite a bit cheaper.
Last year, so we switched to it.
And and with the workers.
That's different than the.
The property insurance, yeah.
And we.
They offer some sort of insurance, I couldn't remember.
I don't know about property.
All right, yeah, I guess.
And I can't remember if we switched one. Last year, um.
I don't remember, I just, well, I know they both go through pain, Australia.
Yes.
You get Montana State Fund.
And this goes through pain last year, this one?
Yeah.
He just couldn't get us that updated file then. Who? The painless guy? No, these are the updated. Yeah. So we switched to him last year. So it was the other. This MSLIP.
So there's now, so because painless the broker, so this is, they didn't come up with like multiple flows or anything. I was kind of questioning it and then I looked, I mean, this is the best sales pitch ever. You go to the last page or page sixteen and then they list. Like a couple hundred schools that use the same insurance.
Yeah, um, as far as the workers' comp goes, I. I haven't had. Any issues with it. I have had some employees that have filed claims, say they didn't love it compared to the old one. Um, as far as the property liability insurance, I've emailed the representative. A handful of times and he's very responsive. Um, like we had a window incident recently and I reached out to our claims person and she was right on it. We had the van and the car and the expedition that had the. Caloric converters ripped off of them and I mean, she had it approved within an hour and we were able to get the vehicles in. So I haven't had any negative experiences with them.
Mm hmm.
Um. I think, yeah, from that standpoint, I think everything's been. Just fine. With the workers' comp, again, it is an estimate based on estimated payroll, so it could be. Within a margin of error, but I I feel like I estimate it high on payroll, so. Hopefully. At the end it will be less.
Mm hmm. Yes, I think you're, you know, if if so many other people are going with it. I know we've had really good luck with the Montana State Fund, what's called, I know, our business has. And so, um. They've been very responsive.
And very.
That's why. Very objective, we thought, yeah. So I. I guess I would see no reason to switch right now, especially since we have got good reps here.
You got both these numbers and that's preliminary.
So there's two different ones. Yes, so this one.
I see the property. Fifty-two.
Yes.
There's a little property insurance, it's in this, the whole thing.
Yes, that's.
It looks like it's fifty.
And I will. If I may say that we got a very good rating because of our technology director getting the cybersecurity done. He was. Blown away with how fast she got done. Because that gave us a good discount on our.
Thank you for that.
Um, so this one is the workers' comp. Yeah, and then.
I guess I was just saying it said fifty-two.
Oh, yes, because I.
Fifty-eight.
Yes, I got this after.
Yeah.
So the fifty, yeah, the industry is not applicable for until like that.
Yeah.
See, these are things we.
Yeah.
People say that the cybersecurity insurance, I don't know how it relates. We go through mislips, but it goes through pain west, but. They, when I was talking at the beginning of the year, it's very hard for schools to get cybersecurity insurance coverage. Just because of the fact that we don't have the budget to put in huge security measures that. The other cybersecurity insurance place. Um, so that's just something to think about in the future. If you are looking to shop around is.
It's very.
It's making sure that we can still get cybersecurity insurance coverage. Because a lot of places won't cover schools, which is why mislips doesn't coverage.
That's enough right there.
So we do have a first, um, our deductible now for cybersecurity is fifty thousand?
No.
What was that? Do you remember what our cybersecurity deductible was last year?
I have my computer, yes. I know that it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars less now because we have them at bay.
Yeah. So that went down quite a bit.
Yeah, I think it's like five, it was five. Third or three hundred.
I was thinking that too. Now it's like fifty thousand. Um. Yeah, we got, I feel like we got put in a really good situation with that. With the cybersecurity that lowered our premiums. Oh, I'm. I'll make a motion to approve both the property liability insurance and the Montana State Fund Workers' Comp.
One second.
Hey, more discussion? Alright, all those in favor of approving the Montana Schools Property and Liability Insurance and Montana State Fund? I. I. Anybody opposed? A past unanimously Yellowstone Boys and Girls Rent Contract. Um, that's the one where they came in and. Use our school for this, right?
So we have, I believe there's two. Therapists.
Are two? Well, one is and then one is like an aide.
Okay.
Aide, actually not a licensed.
Okay.
And they are school-based mental health.
Yes. So they use our facility, but they're not our employees. Um, and so that's the one where we are billed through the Medicaid and then we put the money into the miscellaneous fund, but we pay them out of the general fund.
And you got that down, right? How many kids are involved in that? This program, just like.
Fourteen to sixteen, probably. Probably. Sixteen.
Yeah, they're a great help and the students may have scheduled regular, well, they do have scheduled regular friends with them, but then if we're in like a crisis event. They will come for those kids and also would come help support. They have training to help us with any kids in that emergency situation. If we had a kid in a. Terrible emotional breakdown or something. Yeah. They they come and help us and they attend our staff meetings when they can and are a part of the school a lot.
Is that K two eight?
Mm hmm.
Mm hmm.
It's similar to like Alzheimer's behavioral.
Yeah, just a different company.
And how much? We don't, we don't really take the country Medicaid sort of.
We have a portion of it, but most of it's reimbursed through that program.
Make a motion to be at some point when we give those contracts.
Second. Okay, any more discussion? All those in favor of 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 okaying the Yellowstone Boys and Girls Rent Contract? I.
Right.
Anybody opposed? Okay, so that one has to end this year, Montana Medical Billing.
Um, so this is where the Medicaid claims get billed through and we get charged a percentage of that. And I want to say it's maybe a few hundred dollars. Overall.
And that link doesn't work. I couldn't get my part.
Yeah.
I got to work on that second agenda. That's nice.
Oh, you didn't get it toward the second one?
Yeah, the the second agenda, it didn't work on that first.
It's funny, I'm starting on the second.
Okay.
Yeah, like I don't have.
But that's just a question of transferring some funds over from here and there, right? So the Montana Medical Billing, I'm looking after now. So we just pay a proportion.
Like a percentage of what we're billed, so let me look really quick. So far. Montana. So. For the year, we're about four hundred bucks right now that we've been billed from Montana Medical Billing for the entire last school year. So it's minimal. It's just a, you just do the. The billing.
That is for the same program of the.
Yeah, they were actually contracted with that, yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract for Montana Medical Bill.
Second. Okay, any more discretion? All those in favor? Opposed, a motion unanimously, resolution for disposal of property. What is that?
That's me.
Oh, okay.
So, um, I've been trying, going through and we have devices that have either died because they're just so old. Or they're basically at their end of their life. Um, and I'm trying by switching around some things, trying to make sure that our staff had. Devices that are not past their end of life because there's just security issues with that. Um, and so there are some items or things that we can offer and get some like, hey, here's twenty bucks for a Chromebook that doesn't update anymore. But if a student wants it to have something at home to just use on like for the online portion.
Mm hmm.
Um, some of them are just, they don't work anymore. Um, so there's just a list of things that throughout the year that goes to be waste. Um, and so there's things that are either broken or they're at their end of their life. Um, and. We don't have the room and tech stuff like in about two years, it's outdated anyway, so we don't just keep. Keeping things for longevity purposes, so all of this is stuff that's not currently usable in our school.
So you want, you're looking at doing what with it?
Well, so we have a company that was the same company Mark uses and it just comes and picks it up.
Oh.
And the only charge we have is for monitors because they is. Not like the new monitors, but the old style monitors, you, they charge two dollars for because they can't dispose of them, like they can't use them for prints anymore. Um, and so I think I have one of those.
I'm sorry.
And that one's broke.
But did you say there's a couple that you might be able to sell?
Yes, yeah, so.
Why we have to do this? We have to run it in the paper, advertise it. In order for her to be able to.
Sell.
Oh, okay.
So majority of them are not workable, but there's a handful that I've set aside that. Um, so like my son's school did that and they're like, we have some, they're, I think they did fifteen dollars and the kid, I mean, it's not. It's not one the school can use anymore, but it's one that somebody can take home and use for however much longer.
So where you put that on? Facebook or whatever.
Um, so I basically just sent it out in the newsletter and just put it online.
Okay.
I think she put it in the newspaper.
Yeah, so that resolution that was attached, I just have to run that in the paper first or I've heard, I think it's two weeks and then.
How much does that cost?
To run it in the paper?
We probably make up the difference. We probably pay for the fifteen dollars.
That's a good point.
Like paper's not cheap sometimes.
But she sells the three or four computers, probably paid for it one time.
Yeah, and I have three tables of computers.
Oh.
Which is, I mean, it's, can't pile that stuff very high.
A lot.
It's just, yeah, it's because we had a lot of. Into devices that once they start going, then it's just the next device goes, the next device goes. So we had about ten. Old computers that were used on a board and they all died at the same.
We bought them all the same team for barrel.
Yeah.
And they only last two years.
No, 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 no. Um, the Chromebooks depends on their life, they're. Five to eight years, it just depends on what the pool gives us, but these ones are. Two plus years past their end of life and.
Just shit.
And once they hit that end of life, then they just, but you said they only last two years.
No, 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 like no, they just, it just is a matter of time before. They won't work anymore. And for us, just that security issue. Of the amount of date.
And almost anytime we have something that's on a depreciation schedule, you're going to have, this is how you can let it go. You're not true to get rid of public owned things.
Yeah.
Do that.
No, and then it gives.
Yeah.
So you'll take care of that. I think it's just, yeah.
But anything that's not the website. Yeah. But then I probably won't post the other items for sale until school starts up because.
Okay.
It's not really easy to get.
No, and really, the website is the cheapest, I mean, by far.
Yeah, I don't know what the law is.
I think it has happened on the paper.
Yeah.
We have looked that up.
But, um, but on my end, they just have, I just have a stack and I'll post them. When we get back to.
You, um, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I was just wondering if you could, I know, can't you post in the beacon too?
Oh.
Like, and that would only be an online posting, maybe, and it might be cheaper.
The answer to that.
I'm not sure. I know you can do like. For loader notices.
Has to be posted in three different places in the district, published in a newspaper, the newspaper in general circulation in the district.
Uh.
You just don't want to make it out.
I mean, I would assume that the beacon qualifies general circulation district. So it doesn't, it doesn't necessarily say that it has to be printed.
I'll make a motion for the resolution for disposal of property.
Don't you say. Alright, any more discussion? So here's what that, yeah, this is some of the.
Hi.
Growing up, okay. Any names? Alright, unanimous, infinite campus.
So this is. So the campuses, our attendance, our. Listen, so you do our online registration through it, our student accounts. But student information.
There you go. Yes, I is.
It also is very handy because a lot of our rostering will now connect from a campus, so there's two things that make my life beginning of the year very. Because I decided to connect.
You have to have some element of it for special education. You have to have a student information system. You can't not have one.
Was there a praise John Gamash?
We will ask the rest. Don't be adding, don't be adding one. We added online.
This is the online registration. Looks like it's seventy-five hundred dollars.
And do you see point of sale there, the OS?
No.
Okay, I might have added that, or must be part of another part that we added the year before to do the. Update the point of sales for the lunches and.
I think that was included last year, I think.
It has food service.
Yes, the lead purchasing is through that program.
Yeah.
Registration, it's our, where we keep our behavior information for the state audits, it's.
Looks like we actually got a credit back.
It's a big thing.
So that online registration for seventy-five hundred is.
That was the same as it was last year as well.
It's worth the time that we take someone in the office to be registering. Those, the volume that it's helping. And 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 having all those updated for the state, having those contacts updated online and then.
Yeah. I didn't think it was a, like a really easy process to repair it, but.
So I thought it was not.
Too high expectations.
Your parent that did it, but.
So last year was seventeen thousand and then we had that credit for.
Telecon.
How much was that last year?
Seventeen.
Okay. Those fifteen.
So where is it?
I think my problem was.
Um.
Was it, didn't work on.
Right, it's like. Yeah. I use the parent as well.
Oh.
So that is that enough to.
It's not enough to say we're not going to do it is because we probably use on the phone, right?
No, no, that's just. Let's try to, I hope my wife listens to this and she knows it. Had to remember my kid's birthday.
I'll make a motion to approve the infinite campus. That's second. Any more discussion on that?
Um, all those in favor of approving infinite campus? I.
Right.
I opposed. It hasn't been counted, the tuition.
Well, this is one that Cindy Foley brought up at that budget meeting.
Mm hmm.
That I did not know needed to be renewed each year, so we missed this, we like in April. Um, so currently we charge eleven hundred dollars for each out of district. Student. And then according to OPI, the amounts on here, so for. Uh, full time, we could charge up to twelve hundred seventy-five dollars. If we wanted to, we could also charge sixteen hundred dollars for seven and eight. If we choose to increase those rates.
If you look at the lower portion of that, it'll show the AMV that we get for students at those levels. So when I speak to seven to eighteen, we get paid at the higher high school rate. For seven to eight graders, that's the difference.
So we get paid the same. Plus the extra tuition for out of districts.
Yes.
Yeah.
I know we had some budgeting concerns that if we raise that to that full sixteen hundred out, then. Then we might lose some of the students who we. So. It seems like an easy. Place to obtain more money, but also I think. We got too out of line. Gospel is only three hundred and something, maybe three fifty. And then in the next year, this is going to be obsolete. I was reading that too on the policies. When we're taking, because the state will transfer the money between school, they won't charge tuition anymore. No.
So this is pretty much the last year we even know of it. And with that being the last, so forty-five thousand of our general fund budget is tuition, so we will lose that.
So, yeah, because if the state transfers the money, they're just transferring the.
Just the.
Transferring the tuition. Right.
Yeah. Yeah, so it's not too good to be too dependent on it anyways, like as far as. You know, we might consider some difference between K six and the seven eight, because the programs are more expensive too.
For one year, I mean that.
So does that limit our ability to like say yes or no to out of district students in the future then with that change or?
We're, all districts are gonna, going to be expected to take the out of districts. But it'll be up to this board to set in your policy about what you're like, what you consider detrimental to the kids who are completely in district. So you'd have to think like. If the grade level, the cap is a hundred and twenty, we've got four, four classes of thirty possible, it can be a hundred and twenty kids. Is your cap, are you only gonna go within ten percent of that, you know, so you're gonna be at one hundred and eighteen, you're not taking anymore. So you have room for movement. You'll have to decide so that way it doesn't look or isn't discriminatory. You know, cause I've always been able to just say, I, I have enough room or Richard and I can say we have room or we don't have room in that grade level. But we're going to need to define what that means. So it's not discriminatory because they're going to expect, and we've always done it and taken kids in and out, but. Yes, it's, it's, they're gonna.
And currently, what are we charging?
Eleven hundred.
For anybody.
Any other district, yeah. So if you have four kids from out of district, you're paying forty four.
And the issue, I guess, when we just mentioned this before, is that the teachers pay that. If they're charging, why you charge all school?
Raising it on everybody. Everybody who pays.
You have to do it on the teachers to. So we're losing hundred and seventy five for each.
I think we are one of the very few besides the hospital charges. I know like. Some school will take as many as they can get, but.
I can't feel like we should just leave it at the one hundred this year. I think, I'd rather than ruffle up animosity with, cause you're kind of, it's a smaller group than. Teachers mixed in there to bring their kids here. I just prefer to sleep in.
Yeah, we're losing, we're losing a few bucks, but it's.
I think it's worth.
I don't have an exact count yet.
Seven and then eighth grade is probably only. We're not losing a lot. Yeah, it's, we're trying to even raise it close to the maximum, so.
And I think a lot of those five seventh graders have kind of gone through as well, so they've.
I mean, if we could just charge the teachers.
All right, I'll make a motion to keep the tuition rates for twenty three, twenty four school year, they're eleven hundred.
A second.
Uh, any more discussion? All right, uh, let's vote on the tuition rates. At the twenty two, twenty three rate, eleven hundred dollars. For the twenty three, twenty four school year, I'm on favor. Okay, MTSBA model policies with required updates. Now, I talked to. The um, MTSBA lawyer, Chris Goff, before I came. And he said, we could go through all of these, we didn't have to go through on weekend soon. That everybody read them and was up to date on them. Because they are required anyway by the new laws that were enacted by the legislature. So he said, we could just, in one motion, we could approve all of them one time. We don't need a second reading on them. And we can also include the one, a- as you see here, the. The separate one, because we separated out the one on the policy nine, nineteen hundred, the emergency. That we have to delete and then the other one on charter schools, but he said, we can include those. If we okayed everything that was here. And I'm just saying, I just, that's not a possibility. He said that was a legal thing we could do. We did not have to go through each one individually. And he is the one who worked with the legislature. And then he applied them to policy, that's what he does, he's the policy man for, or MTSBA. And he had, you know, he had a reason for all these, as far as charter school one, but I questioned the charter school one because. I've been reading in that, that there's some problems with the charter school, there's some legal issues that are being brought up. He said, not with this particular house bill, it's with another one. So this house bill, this particular policy sixteen fifty is good. That the other one is the one that they're debating about. So he said, if we pass, you know, we went ahead and passed this, it made it our, let's see, it's gonna be a good policy. It's the other policy that they're having issues with. So all of these could be okayed and applied to our policies.
I said a comment on the first, the first one that. Proficiency based AMV, so it references. Like a grade level. Since we don't do A, B, C, D. Is there like a substitute that fits for our district or?
What, what is it reference?
I references. Let me pull it up. It references like proficiency being the equivalent of. Uh, a minimum grade of A, B, is what they say there.
So it speaks a lot to the high school districts, you know, there's not very many. Uh, eighth grades around here up to K eight that have ABCDs, right, so. But the proficiency base, what this, what this really is about is allowing. Transformative learning and other styles, the proficiency base of that you're not always going to be, um, seat time for credit. That it might be that you can prove proficiency. Yeah, I mean, if you open up the law on that one, it should refer somewhat to the transformational learning.
Yeah, it does talk about that. I just, it just, within this policy amendment, it specifically says, you know, like. References what you said, that it's not about just, you know, time and a chair, but it's about, you know. Of course, you know, completing coursework and then it references this minimum grade of a B and I'm like, well, we don't give out. That grade, so presumably we should have some.
More of a secondary, cause then if you read through Montana law, it asks us to have proficiency based on the standards. So it's, that's more of like for a credit bearing institution. Cause I'd have to have it in front of me too.
I don't think that's gonna, I can't just cause it, this grief down the road, can you?
It's just, I guess it's just a. I don't know how you really. Well, I mean, I wonder if we can just table that one and have, you can kind of read it.
Can you read it out loud or is it? I read them all today and there wasn't anything in any of those that caught me as off, but I'm just gonna read real fast how I'm writing. At what point do you see, oh, down here?
All these are Monca State law required, right?
They are, they, they coordinated the house bills that passed with policy is what's down here.
Yeah, luckily our school policy does say that, as long as they are state or federal law required changes that we can do them on a first reading.
Thirteen ten says that we can do it.
On our first reading.
That's right, so we don't have to.
Given sufficient notice. Yeah, I just wondered if there's like, to fit our system, is there a. You know, do we add something, say minimum grade of A, B, or?
Or proficient.
Or proficient.
Cause we actually have proficient, which is higher than a B probably, but. Then maybe our standards would be a little high because, but we still have to say it's proficient. I mean, it's so that you could have students that maybe didn't do the, the full one hundred eighty days, but they've earned. They're going on to another grade level because they've shown proficiency. So. I think, I don't, you know, it's kind of like Elsie Arts and having an A plus for the state symbol. And not all schools use As, you know, the majority of schools in the state don't, so. Don't you feel like it's just that big that, I think that school people know what proficiency means, whether it says a B or not, you know what I mean? But you can table it and look at it.
Yes, we should have. Yeah, let's do that.
I think that's fair, any of them that you have questions on your table, because it's the most I've ever seen come through the legislature. If you have some, you're pressing, take time and.
So table the poli- the, the first one, the policy. One zero zero five E.
Yeah. And that's just simply to try to make sure that our systems match and we can just make an and or thing. I think that was the only one that I saw that had anything where I'm saying is right.
And the deleted policy just has to do with COVID. That nineteen to nineteen twelve is all COVID. And not, there's sixteen fifty, where this policy was created to assist districts in complying with. It's spelled five forty nine, this policy details how to apply for authorization to establish a public charter school. And respond to public requests. So that's a law now, and if somebody does come to us. It looks like we will need to reference that. But it's a law, so we're gonna have to deal with it if it does come to us, right? Or am I wrong about that? That's that, that would do. But it's a required model policy.
Is that the charter school?
Yes.
Yeah, I think you did, I think.
You have to, yeah. The policy details how to buy authorization to establish and respond to public requests. For new schools and programs.
Have anybody could do that, but.
But just to know that, um, if it does happen, this is where we go.
Yeah, sure.
This will be on in our policy book, so if somebody does come, we have a place to go.
Highly likely in your district, with that highly likely in your district with the highest rate of homeschoolers and highest rate of. Kids in private schools, very highly likely, you'll just, you'll run into this in the next five years.
We have the highest rate of homeschoolers, yeah, next to white fish. Yeah, in the valley.
Home school, private school. It's coming. It'd be a good thing.
So we've got, we've, we've got this in writing how we want to do it. Okay, so what we do is entertain a motion to. Accept all these updates with the exception of the first one, policy one zero zero five F B.
I need a little bit more time.
The um.
It's okay.
There was just the one on the meetings, I assume that, you know, I had the lengths, but I assume that we. We adopted, we were just adopting or saying meeting time, schedule, everything.
Which one is that? Oh, online, yeah. That's just, it's just saying how you notify, some of the, um, some of the, the smaller schools. Have a lot of trouble with notification of their people because they don't have good. Internet access, access. So they're, they're concerned, they don't have newspapers, I mean, we're talking about schools way east. So in, at that, at that meeting, they were, that was mostly concerned them. You know, what, what were they gonna do as far as trying to get it out? And so they said, well. It is okay to do online notice, and they were saying, well, we can.
But as far as the time goes. Yeah, same time. Yeah, unless otherwise specified, meetings will take place in the blank. Regular meetings take place at PM on blank. We probably have to specify that in order for this to be finalized.
So when I send this to Chris.
For our first reading and to.
So when I send it to Chris.
Yes, we want to decide those. I, I'm fine with the same schedule, it works for me, the five thirty. It does for me. It works for everyone else. It doesn't seem like, my only concern when we initially switched was teacher attendance, which it seems to be. Working okay, I'm sure everybody like, maybe right after school, but seems to still have good attendance from the teachers, so that's appreciated.
So if I thirty, second Monday of the month is.
Yeah, yeah, I think we just approve this with those terms.
So we prove it on the first.
If we do, they bring us copies?
Okay, so. We are, we can just make those changes right here. So when we approve, when we approve this, it will be approved with those specifications, correct?
Yeah, at a budget meetings, they've got another blank there. Yeah, same, myself policy. It just says budget meetings and then it says this notice shall be published in the.
Okay.
With the language that we. Presumably could publish that paper as well.
I found out my meeting that if the interlink allows free. Publications that I have to, yeah, free online, then I have to cross our agenda.
Yeah.
As well.
And, and your agenda and also your package, all that we have.
If they don't do it for free, then we're doing it the way we do it.
I think once again, that's one of those.
Publish it like for a newspaper once a week or.
So I was like, how would they even, they'd have to have everything so established so far in advance.
And you think of all the school districts, I mean, the paper would be full of agendas and. They hear that one.
But I'm gonna find out just to cover mine and that's same as board needs.
Oh, the same document?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, got it.
So we got the date, time of the regular meetings and then, so we got that posting for board budget meetings, which. We can just follow the same posting of regular meetings. And then that, up above the regular means, it says, there's something, uh, item C under notice of meetings that. Item C under notice of meetings that. The entrance to each school in the district and after following location in the community. You don't post. Physically any other place than.
At school, so I posted on the front door, I posted on our website, and then. We'll post the meeting notice in the paper, but I need to find out if the interlake has free postings. Or that, then I would have to post it there.
Yeah, so I think we could just take that off on item C, just. Says in addition to the above noted electronic postings, the district shall post a physical copy of the meeting agenda, have the entrance to each school in the district. Because that's the only place you're posting a physical copy.
Yes, yes.
So what does that last sentence I do, we could just remove that?
We're hanging up running stuff here, is it? I hope it's it. I mean, I don't think we have too many usually here.
It's with that, but I think.
This, I think this is because of the.
Legislation, this was just a little legislation. And I doubt that we have too many.
It feels like we have a couple at a time.
Yeah, that seems to maybe get one or two, but I mean, this is just.
I was doing my agenda and I got that ignored.
I think it's because we didn't renew our MTSVA soon enough. And over new.
Realize, yeah, right, right.
I'll I'll attempt a motion here, I'll make a motion to approve. All the model policies with required updates. Except policy one zero zero five F E, the proficiency based A and B, which will table. Based on that, just to confirm that grading. And adding in our regular meeting dates and posting requirements to the board meeting policy one four zero zero. And. Excluding model policies and adopting the required model policy sixteen fifty.
Hey, we have a second. All right, I'm not even gonna attempt to. Look at it count. Okay, so silly is. I mean, that, you know, I think.
Part of that on that one.
All right, all of them in favor. Oh, I'm sorry, any more discussion?
Thank you.
All of us in favor. Any opposed, all right, that passed you now. Now. Some of the August fourteenth board meeting, but you're maybe.
Well, I tried to push off the budget meeting. But there's not many time between the time those few. And our regular meeting anyways, so I just have the same. And I'll have to.
Because it's due twenty fifth, right?
It's weird the way they write it, it's like it has to be done by the twentieth. But then submitted to the state by the. Twenty fifth, within three days of approving it, and so I just. Figure if we do it on the fourteenth, we need to call a special meeting if we don't get everything. Then at least gives us a couple days, but then that's also fair week, and so I know a lot of people are. Busy with that kind of stuff, too, so our normal meeting would be the fourteenth, so.
I'm just gonna let you know when my family wants to go to the fair and then let's schedule on that day.
I don't go to the fair personally, I decided the fair.
Yeah.
But I know other people have like animals.
Oh, yeah.
And they participate in the fair.
I could have a fair at my house.
Do you need us to approve then this summer schedule?
Yes, so that's typically what's happened in the past, so I get opposition to pay the bills, since there's no meeting until August. And then the transportation claims as well, if there's anything come up between now and then.
Sure.
And then I put that in August.
And I'm assuming this date like will have work sessions before then.
Yes.
Yeah, so the first would be on the tenth of July, or if. Prelimarily, if that works for you guys and it doesn't.
Tenth of July.
Doesn't let Cecilia and Carolyn try to work around schedule.
And then we can schedule kind of there, that works depending on what we get accomplished and.
Yes.
I'm four o'clock. Should have broke off a couple, so we could have got the Z just a couple away. Good on the hire, the resignation of the top and stuff going.
So we can just do the summer schedule as one.
Yeah. Motion for summer schedule. Second.
Discussion, all those in favor of approving the summer schedule, I always. Passionate honestly, information items, the budget, expenditure line, item detail.
And that you do not have, just because I didn't finish the.
I like this one.
Yeah, honestly.
Well. Right, it doesn't show what we're at year, so once I get the claims input, then I'll just email that, I'll help you for informational, it's informational, so.
Yeah, but we did, you did have one, and I should, I'll go pull it up. At one of the West Valley with the teacher negotiations, it was, I think it was a little more consolidated summary. I'll try to try, I'll try to find that copy, because I thought it kind of boiled things down a little condensed.
It was a little easier read.
I'll try to find.
Okay, tell me which one.
Okay. All right, and this is just an information item. Perhaps Tina can address Landon Henderson.
Well, she kind of already told it earlier. Yeah, he has put out in a couple places, and I don't, you know, blame him, and he he got a job, which we hope everybody does get one, and. Circumstances were favorable to take the job in light. And I didn't do it as an action item because he didn't actually accept.
No, yeah.
He was thankful for time here, he sent us a letter and he was.
Well, good, okay, so the improvement be at the heat units.
So that was the one that Phil had. Talked about at that work session about the heat unit.
Yeah.
Just to get it updated, I think we're in on that.
Yeah, we mentioned that we needed some, still the improvement contract, we need, we will, I mean, that, yeah.
The others, she does suppose. So I think the other pieces, we need to figure out what the. A, if this cost gets improved under. Like the commission weapon facility, maintenance.
I think a portion of it probably could, the other thing we would need to maybe look into is like an intercap loan type.
Exactly, because if we could get the, if we could get the the commissive levy established, then we could do the intercap loan. Fund it and have it paid off with the levy would be easy.
And there's limitations on to how much we can levy, though, so I don't know that it would cover enough. But again, that's maybe. That thing and figure out how much we can levy.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Even if we come up with a portion of it, have to do an intercap loan for less or.
And I assume even though this is two hundred fifty five thousand dollars, it still does not supply a A C to like middle school. They made me sit over there.
Yeah, teacher negotiation.
So I just sat in there. More over there, yeah. The science room. All those wonderful garage door windows that are taking the heat.
Well, then they put all the middle school in there, too, so it's just.
It smells like.
What's that, what's the board member retreat thing that you have on there?
I don't know. You told me. I'm sorry. This was one, I'm sorry, I thought you had another one, but this one that had been brought up. To my attention that perhaps the. Deborah Self was gonna come up here, I thought it was gonna be June twenty seventh, and and she may have some of her retreat. Haven't heard any more about that, so so I I'm not sure that it's something that is gonna be, that's gonna be done. So it was just, well, District Five was gonna. Bring bring her in, and it's one of those retreats that they used to have where they could get together and visit with her, but. I'm not, I shouldn't have looked into it more, I guess, but after the original, a month ago, when actually. The chairman of the school District Five at that time mentioned it to me that we might be able to come in and and. Come in on that, but then I haven't heard any more. I wish, I tell what, I'll look at it, I'm ending it, definitely, we can, we can really send it for canceling that.
No, nobody.
A motion and action. It'll just be, I'll just send the information out if that's still.
Yeah, as long as nobody responds.
Informational.
I will send that information out in that out as soon as I.
And so then we might. Do that, or I guess.
Well, it'd be optional for you, like if you're available those days, you could go to.
And I'm not even sure where it would be. And I I really have thought that if it was going to be of own concern, that that would be, it's supposed to have been June twenty seventh. And I would have thought that there'd have been some communication or something sent out, because this was just sort of a preliminary. Idea that I had been thrown out there, and I just thought that if it's a done deal, we would have heard a little more about it, we didn't. So I'll let you know if it's been canceled or postponed or whatever.
May shuffle after they reorganize their board of schools or something, too.
Yeah, yeah, it's hard to say, hard to say. Hard to say, but we'll we'll, I'll look into it, I'll talk to the P S A. And.
When the budget's the. Please do a gooder motion to adjourn.
Second.
And in discussion. All of them favorite. I, you know.